Good evening, everyone. Time is five forty P M. I'd like to call our first budget meeting to order. Mister Truesdale, could you please call the role?
Yes, Miss Daniels?
Here.
Miss Green?
Present.
Mister Madsen? Mister Majors?
Here.
Miss Rolls?
Present.
I'm sorry, present.
Mister Rodriguez?
Present.
And Miss Bowers?
Present, thank you. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, tonight we are going over public safety, which is police firing codes. Uh, so I will start with the Police Department with our Commissioner and Deputy Chief Swanson. All right, you guys want to take us over?
Uh, good evening, how are you?
Pretty good.
Thank you for having us, even though I think we had to come. The, so what we did this year, we just put a little PowerPoint slide together. Um, they are making paper copies. That's my fault. I should bust them down. Um, but I can start walking you through this, but it'll probably be easier. As you see for the next slide, it's basically, I can't read it myself. It's an organizational slide of the Harrisburg Bureau Police. This is how we're organized into the different divisions, um, how they're arrayed, and it might give you a little more perspective. This is something that we even, it's posted on our, on the City of Harrisburg website. And we use Power D M S and it puts on a public facing side so we can put things up, take them down, adjust them, revise. So it's always our most current version of whatever's on the website is the most current version we have in our Police Department also. So that's just for your knowledge, so you can see how the Police Department works. Also, the City of Police is, I'm sorry, the Police District map, we're divided into seven different zones throughout the, uh, the city. And basically that's just a administrative thing that they designed well before I started here in nineteen ninety-two and probably before, before even, before you did, boss. Uh, those seven districts have always been arranged like that. Uh, District one, two, and three are the uptown, uh, districts and four, five, six, and seven are the old districts. Okay. Uh, so what I did was I took the, um, the, the one budget slide sheet that shows the arrangement of personnel within the Bureau Police. And I just pasted that into here and just made some notes on there so we could have discussion points. Uh, as you can see here, we are asking for three new positions this year. Uh, I'm gonna get more into those on the next slide, but overall, uh, this accounts for the twenty twenty-two adopted. Right now, there's sixteen actual slots for twenty twenty-two. And you can say, well, it says seventeen on there. The one, the Technical Services Manager, uh, was not funded for twenty twenty-two. So once again, we're gonna ask for that for twenty twenty-three, and I'll explain more why we want to do that. But the three new positions for twenty twenty-three are the Technical Services Manager, a Confidential Secretary for the Deputy Chief, and Evidence Custodian. So if the Technical Services Manager is basically, they're located in Technical Services Division. We, uh, at, at one point, a couple of years ago, we had a, uh, it was lieutenant at the time. We made him a captain, taught him Midas. And he was doing all the behind-the-scenes jobs that occur within the Police Department. And we looked at that and we're like, we're in a lot of trouble. If two, one of two things happens, Todd retires or something happens to him medically or a car wreck or something like that. And so what we decided to do was we took those jobs and we made actually three different positions out of it. And you're like, holy smokes, you really, that's really subdivided down very far, but they're very, they're all technical jobs that require really a full-time person to manage. The one that we never did, it was authorized, I think in twenty twenty-one, and we interviewed and interviewed and could not fill that position. And in twenty twenty-two, it wasn't funded. So what we're asking for that to do is, it is basically is we're gonna make that position as a manager, and they're gonna manage the parking enforcement within the Technical Services Division, the records center personnel. And under each of those, there are four AFSMI employees in each side and four parking enforcement officers, four records center, like data technicians. They will manage them. They're also gonna do all of our write-to-know requests. Right now, they're handled by the captain and one of the, uh, data techs, and it is a, uh, we get a lot of write-to-know requests. They have to process, find, and send back over to Law Bureau for dissemination. And then the other thing they're gonna do is the, uh, manage our, our J-NET. And what J-NET is, it is a, a system the state has that allows us to access Penn dot records, uh, criminal history, a lot of different databases the state has that are rolled under one thing called J-NET. And what we have to do is you have to be certified to be in the system, so you have to take, uh, tests to qualify to get in. And you have to, uh, but it has to be managed at the department level. And so right now, uh, Captain Young is doing that. Um, and I'm sure he'd love to give that job up. Uh, it is funded for, uh, we're requesting fifty-five thousand for that position. The Confidential Secretary for the Deputy Chief, that's currently in AFSMI, uh, position. Uh, the mayor and the commissioner had a conversation a few months ago, and they requested that be put in there, uh, to make, make her a confidential secretary, and I guess you said you wanted to get them bonded, both, uh, the, the commissioner and myself, uh, for our secretaries. Because there's a lot of sensitive and, sensitive information that comes through that office that, uh, there are some things that I can't allow her to do because of the nature of her job and what she's allowed to do and not allowed to do. And Joni keeps me on task about doing that. Uh, the third one is an Evidence Custodian. Now, if you remember from the, uh, one of the P C C E grants, the, I think it was a local law enforcement grant, I had requested it put in there for an Evidence Custodian to fund that position for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. I'm also asking, coming back and asking for that position here, because we won't know the results that P C C B grant until fourteen December. But the Evidence Custodian, uh, right now, we have two people in that section down in the basement of the Police Department. They collect all the evidence collected from every crime scene, lost property, uh, you name it. Uh, it, it all goes to them where they have to get it into the system, get it out to a lab, pick it up from the lab, and then get it back over to court when that's necessary. And as the court has disposition of cases, they take that evidence and then destroy it, which in and of itself is a very labor-intensive process. And that's where we're falling behind. Uh, we, I think two years ago, we had one of our Evidence Custodians retire. Uh, a new guy came in and we looked at the problem and we, we asked if he could stay on a part-time basis just to destroy evidence. And we just couldn't do that. Uh, so as we looked ahead, we're like, we, we have to solve this problem eventually. There's evidence there from, for, for decades that they do destroy stuff, but not as fast as we need to. Because you have to research every case, make sure the case is, uh, disposed of in, in some manner. And where there's a, a disposal letter from the, uh, Dauphin County District Attorney's Office, so they're allowed to destroy the evidence end. So is, there is potential there, we could get that grant funded, but there's not a promise of it. So we are asking to have a, a full-time Evidence Custodian down there. In addition to, there are two people down there, but one of the persons is an Evidence Custodian and one is the Quartermaster for the Bureau. They order all the uniforms and all the equipment, um, process all the invoices, get people sized. Uh, so, but as one Evidence Custodian is not there, the Quartermaster will take over if they're on leave or something like that. Or people come down to retrieve a, a lost wallet, or maybe they're arrested and they, they had a prisoner property. They have to come back down and retrieve that downstairs. So that would give us the ability to keep doing what we're supposed to be doing, still serve the public, but still serve the Police Bureau to collect the evidence and, and preserve. Uh, the only difference, uh, suffered in management raises, uh, it was two percent across the board minus the Commissioner and our records, uh, uh, our Record Management System Manager, which is, uh, Monica Robinson. She manages our record, uh, management system called Cody. And, but since then, we've put a lot more things on her, really last year, but this year was, got even worse. Uh, this is the first full year of our online reporting system. She also manages that. And then, uh, we are switching, right now, we report our crime statistics, um, to the P A State Police and then to the F B I. Uh, it's called U C R, the Uniform Crime Reporting. Uh, the federal authorities want us to switch to NiBRS. And we just, this, earlier this year, we came up with a plan to get there by January of twenty twenty-three. And she has taken that role on to get us converted from U C R to NiBRS starting one January. That's pretty much on track. The training for that will start in December. But there was a lot of background things we had to do with our Record Management System and preparing ourselves internally. So we're making sure we capture the right data all the time, so she doesn't have to backtrack and, and go back. Because right now for the U C R stuff, we're pretty much on task. But switching to NiBRS is an animal in and of itself. We even had a call from the F B I in Western Virginia asking if we need any help to get there, and we think we're in a pretty good spot, because she's doing a very good job managing. Uh, we just gonna ask questions at the end, or do you want to go by?
Uh, I planned on kind of just asking the questions at the end, but if anyone has a question regarding anything that, that's went over, you can, uh, feel free to jump in at any point and ask about something specifically being talked about.
Okay, because what I'm trying to do is, I'm gonna go over the personnel side first. We're gonna talk about management, then we're gonna talk about F O P and, uh, then AFSMI. Then we're gonna talk about the actual budget parts of itself, services, supply, and capital.
Okay.
Okay.
And then at the end, if we could go over the questions that were asked by council, just for the good of the public. We have your answers, but they don't have your answers.
I got you. I have everything right in front of me.
All right.
Okay. Okay, you can, this is the, uh, another snippet of the F O P and Ask Me section of that, uh, personnel roster. The best way to explain this one is, uh, we are looking to realign some of the positions within the Bureau. So what we did was of the original seven lieutenants, we reduced that number to five. We looked at our sergeants, went from ten to twelve, and then are asking, really, our only one additional position would be a police corporal. And that's just to better align ourselves with the Bureau with, with the personnel that we have. So there are no other differences on there, uh, for F O P or AFSMI. Um, those are all the same. Uh, getting into the next slide here, it just incorporates what I just said. And just those numbers, uh, include the three percent raise for AFSMI employees and three point five percent F O P twenty twenty-three raises. The F O P personnel issues. You can see on the, uh, one slide, there was a hundred and two police officer positions. Uh, there are sixteen current patrol officer vacancies. Nine of those are funded, seven are not funded. You can see that's the difference what, for twenty twenty-three is in twenty-two, fifteen of the police officer positions were not funded. The proposed vacancies below that are all in how we would like the Police Department to be aligned if you choose that course of action. That will be the result of what patrol officer, or what vacancies we have within the Bureau, January first, twenty twenty-three. It's somewhat problematic, uh, because right now, uh, we are finishing up a recruiting session that started sixth August. Uh, from that date, we went through, uh, people filling out applications, doing background checks, uh, doing a polygraph exam. And now on December, uh, next, next week, the end of next week, beginning of the, the week after that, we are gonna start the interview process for those positions. Because we already had finished it in earlier recruiting class where we made actually ten conditional offers to people back in, for the nine January hack class. Our intent was to fill whatever positions we had available, uh, in December with the delta of that number. So we thought we, well, at the end of the day, we're gonna, we're gonna offer the nine, the ten conditional officers actually decreased over time. Because after you get, let's say Mister Madsen, the Commissioner calls you and offers you a job as a conditional offer, you still have to do a psychological exam, physical exam, a Nelson Denny reading test, and pass the P T exam to get into Harrisburg Area Community College, or whatever academy we decide to send you to. Uh, we've had people who have failed some of those, those things. So that will drop our number down. Right now, we're at nine people going there. It may be a little bit slur, a little bit less because there are some other issues with some of the things we're trying to resolve right now. But we know that if the, with that proposed vacancies, whatever number that is, we have enough slots to send, uh, those nine people to hack. Then for the people we interview in December, one of those people, whatever that number is to get to ten, we will send to hack on nine January. That's good. We also have an opportunity in twenty twenty-three to send people to additional Police Academy classes at Temple and Hack throughout the rest of twenty twenty-three. So you can see under, I run down, Temple is May of twenty twenty-three, Hack is July of twenty twenty-three, and Temple is September of twenty twenty-three. Currently, right now, we have five cadets at Hack and five cadets at Temple. The five cadets at Hack will graduate, uh, I think seventeen December or twelve December, uh, and then they will start their in-house training. They'll start the field training program, and they'll be available to hit the street on seventeen April, if they get through all those phases with no issues. So is, is those police officers come out of those academies, come into the Bureau, get trained up, are suitable to hit the street, we can now move people to different positions as you look at the proposed projected vacancies. And I know this, we're, it's a lot of balls up in the air to see how they all land. Uh, in addition, so as we make a corporal promotion, and our next promotional exam is scheduled for twenty-five March twenty twenty-three at Hack. And we're gonna, why we, we have certified lists right now, promotional lists of corporal, sergeant, and lieutenant. The lieutenant list is exhausted, the sergeant list is exhausted, and the corporal list has two more people on there. Uh, but we only had one position to promote into. If you decide to give us the additional corporal position, we could, that list expires sixteen February twenty twenty-three. In January, before that hack class starts on nine January, if you allow us to do that, we will promote another corporal, which will open up another patrol officer vacancy, which will allow us to hire another person to go to Hack in January. Uh, in April, and in March, after we do that test, sometime in April, we'll get that list certified by the, uh, Civil Service Commission. Uh, that will allow us to promote into, into those other vacancies. Uh, we only, right now, one is a, we don't have anybody, any sergeants eligible to be lieutenants or any corporals eligible, eligible to be sergeants. So we have to give them a promotional test, so we have lists available to draw from to promote them into those positions. I know it sounds confusing, but I, I think I, if I didn't explain it, you can, I'll try to clarify. Every time we make those moves, if we promote a patrol officer to a detective, it creates a patrol officer vacancy. We can then send another person to another academy, and that's how, if we manage it properly and plan ahead, we can fill our patrol officer vacancies in twenty twenty-three. With our recruiting efforts and how that has gone, and I think we done, uh, pretty, compared to other, uh, aid, uh, other entities, I think we've done pretty well overall. But at the end, we still have to manage it properly, so we continue to create positions to put people into. That doesn't account for, we have two known retirements in twenty twenty-three, and there may be others, we'll have to see. So all those require, hey, once we know about it, we can plan and then execute the plan. All those things add up, as you can see there, for the proposed twenty twenty-three budget of eighteen million, five hundred, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. And it accounts for all of the, uh, contractual raises that, uh, have already been negotiated. And it matched, all I did on, so these next slide, this is the personnel slide, and these are the, the actual budget slides of the lines and how they're, just wanted to show you they're the same thing. Our actual proposed budget, and I believe the first one we're gonna talk about is for services. First one's for services. So all I'm gonna point out on these slides, if you have questions that you can ask, but four two zero zero one zero, uh, advertising, I know that was one of the questions about how we did with advertising, might as well answer it now. One of the questions was how much of the advertising budget from twenty twenty-two was utilized, what ways was utilized, and what were the results? So the twenty twenty-two budget was twenty thousand, one hundred dollars. And we use those lines for four things, sealed bids, sealed bids, which we don't really do that very often. P A Media Group, which is basically putting, uh, advertisements in a paper for the Civil Service Commission to say there's, you have so much time to appeal, and this is where we're gonna meet and all these things, uh, attending police recruitment or job fairs, and advertising for recruiting. Uh, so last, this year, uh, so far, we used around ten thousand dollars for billboard advertising, which is actually, now, we did two things last year was billboard and social media. We weren't a hundred percent sold into social media, so we tried the billboard, and so we're just gonna stop that for a year and see how the billboard goes. And I probably should have printed this slide out, but we have, uh, some Bureau Police recruitment statistics. Uh, so basically is, we had in April of twenty, April of twenty twenty-two, uh, when we did our first, uh, recruitment period for twenty twenty-two, we had sixty-three people show up for our physical, uh, uh, a physical fitness test, which we did up at Camp Curtain Elementary. By comparison, we went and helped out with the Dauphin County Consortium, which is, the consortium is a, a bunch of, uh, Dauphin County Police Departments. Who, uh, we do one test and you can apply for like, I think it was eight or nine different departments within the, uh, Dauphin County. When you applied for Harrisburg, you just took a test to go through the Harrisburg process. We had sixty-three people, they had thirty-eight. So I mean, I thought that was pretty significant. I, I was shocked we did better than they did. In August, we had fifty-eight people show up. Our next test for, uh, uh, the next recruitment period actually starts in January, and our P D test is fifteen April of twenty twenty-three. So we, we already have, I think the last number I heard, uh, Sarah say was like a hundred and eleven people who signed up to be notified when we announced our test. So do I think that our recruiting is, or our utilization of advertising has been successful? I do. When I did see that line, though, I think we, there was a little bit confusion, uh, when we were doing the whole process, because on there it says, uh, twenty-five thousand, one hundred. I thought we had talked about that when we had to cut some figures, and I had thought it was down to ten thousand, one hundred. And I thought that was suitable for the, the police purposes at that point. So it's up to you. I, my recommendation, we can probably decrease that by fifteen thousand. Generally, we, of the ten that we used, about five hundred for putting stuff into the, the paper to advertise our meetings. It was ten thousand for, uh, billboard advertising. But I don't think we're gonna have to do as much billboard advertising, and they really help us out with a lot. We do go to job fairs, but generally, they don't charge very much, and it, uh, they give us a lot of free tables anyway, so. Uh, four two zero zero five zero, which is postage. So in twenty twenty-two, the legislator passed an act in reference to Act Four, which basically is, and deals with missing people. That, uh, that act required us to mail DNA samples of missing juveniles to the P S P lab. That's not something we had to do before. We used to have two hundred dollars in that budget, and we really wouldn't spend that much money. How much are they gonna cost us to send that out there? We're not sure yet, because they still have to designate that entire process. Right now, we're still hand-delivering those things, uh, but they don't want us to do that in the future. So we upped that to two thousand, and, uh, it's, we're not really sure what it's going to be. So we'll have to figure that part out. The last one there, four two twos, one hundred for the utility stuff, mostly has to do with the C P station. An extra group of slides up there. Uh, four two five zero nine zero, which is, uh, maintenance service contracts. So we have, uh, body worn cameras. And really, this year, we had, we reached a decision point. These are the ones we have right here. We also, uh, this is what our contract is for, but even the cars have, uh, watch guard cameras in them, which we record traffic stops and stuff like that. The, the contract for the body worn cameras expires in April of twenty twenty-three. We evaluated our system, decided that, hey, there is a lot of new technology out there. I believe it was two hundred and fourteen thousand when we bought the system three years ago. It'll be four years for next year. Uh, when we looked at it about purchasing that same exact system, it was up to about three hundred and fifty thousand. So we did two things. We looked at our current system and decided that we are still in a position where the cameras were in, in, in good shape. We have a good body worn camera manager who's managing that system. Uh, if, if we spent, uh, thirty thousand, it would give us one year, they would allow us to continue to use that same system. We could go for one more year. Then we would take another look at it to see how we were doing, and then we would look at buying body worn cameras again. But that's a huge expense. But when the grant thing came up for the local law enforcement grant, uh, we decided to at least put in for it because, uh, it dealt with technology upgrades also. So if the grant, and we'll figure that out in December, how that works out. If we can get the, the grant to fund those body worn cameras as a technological upgrade, then it will save the city a significant amount of money, and then the technology is there, and body worn cameras, whether people love them or hate them, actually, we didn't ask for them, but it worked out good for the police because it actually captures a lot of stuff that we didn't see. And it gives you a true depiction of what happened when people, if, as I said something mean to them, I can look at the body worn camera and see exactly what I said. So it does help. If we're wrong, we're wrong. Um, but that is why, that one is, there's a, there's an increase in the cost there, only because we didn't, the body worn cameras before were paid upfront, and now we have, we're gonna have to have a thirty thousand dollar bill to continue that service for one year. Uh, and we'll reevaluate that, or we'll look at the grant for that one. Uh, four two nine zero one four, last night, uh, you're the last item on the agenda. We discussed Chaplain Lathrop's, uh, contract, and that is why that one, that one line there went up by forty thousand. And, and we also don't forget that one was potentially a grant-funded option also. The four two nine zero one six and four two nine zero nine zero, those are all miscellaneous services contracts. Uh, I'm sorry, miscellaneous contracted services. Some of, most of them are inflation adjustments, and then the national light-out costs, we just added more because all these little things we do for that, it just, the costs just seem to go up incrementally with inflation. Our only unknown is the Humane Society contract was also in there. Right now, I believe that's, I think it's seventy thousand dollars a year. Um, they've had a lot of, uh, turnover out there. We, only by this time, and we had the same issue last year, we could not get a, a, a contractual figure from them, or even a contract, uh, to present to you, so be ready to go by January, so we can start that service immediately. It was, I think they came back in December with that contract. So we still have that as the same amount for now. Um, but we'll have to see what the actual contract is, and those are the, the known con, those are the known changes in those, those lines there. Uh, the next slide, four three zero 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 two, and that is in reference to, uh, software. So uh, Mister Bortner went Mister Bortner, when he was doing the Tyler Technology briefings on how we're going to replace Metro because. I heard this the other day or yesterday when Steve Zimmerman was being brought back to maintain Metro. That's because the police, we still use Metro for all of our overtime. Personnel planning for like schedules, it does all of our leave things. And when we looked at Tyler Technologies. It. It wasn't suitable for the police for that and how we do subpoenas and things like that. So we looked and I think we did three different demonstrations, three different systems and Planet was the best one we could find. And so that's why we're asking for under four three zero 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 two. That is what that upgrade there is why that costs more money. Then that's a that's a one time. And then it drops down significantly after that is a maintenance service contract. The four three zero 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 two is a Hawk analytics upgrade and basically it is cell phone mapping and record analysis. That's for use of the criminal investigation division. And four three zero zero one six. That's medical lab. All we did there is all the supply things. We just bumped up a little bit for inflation adjustment. Getting near the end. So there was a question in reference to four five three zero zero four equipment vehicle, how we intend on using that money in a proposed budget of three hundred one thousand dollars. And. From memories, we had actually looked at adjusting that figure. It was higher originally. But then Rita had got us interested in the gaming grant, so we looked at that. So what we did was we looked at. There are vehicles that we purchased in twenty twenty two. That we didn't have enough money in the budget to outfit. There's one like that. So what we're trying to do is there's also a lease vehicle coming in. And potentially two of those vehicles from the gaming grant will be purchased by the gaming grant, but outfitted by the city. So we have money set aside for that and then four new police SUVs. But depending what the price of those, it may end up being three because of the amount of that budget in there. And then I can, if you'd like, ma'am, I could go into the questions that were asked and answer those.
I'm going to start to see if anyone has any questions on this presentation. And then we'll go on to the the answers from the questions that we presented before the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
So I will start all the way to my far left with the Chair of Public Safety, Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions regarding this presentation?
Not currently, but if anything does come up, I'll ask him on the next call. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels.
Just one question. You mentioned the software that. That you look at other software and they weren't really good at helping you. Deal with subpoenas the way the current software that we're using.
The planet software, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so is that us responding to subpoenas or is that us issuing subpoenas?
So what we're using right now is Metro. And. It was designed the way we do business and how the DJs send us things. So let's say I get pulled over for a traffic ticket. And I'm like, I didn't do it, so I'm going to fight it in court. So the district justice issues subpoenaed to me to appear to defend myself and to the police officer who pulled me over, Tom Carter. So. We get a subpoena at the police department. It's entered into Metro. The officers notified via that and they also get that paper copy. Once they get back from court, they can enter that into Metro. It it works with the payroll system. It records what happened with that court case. And then everything is closed out and everything is very smooth and it circles complete. With Tyler, there is really no subpoena system within Tyler Technologies that we can use. And in reference to the payroll. When we're trying to build our personnel schedules into Tyler. I think the fire department had this the same issue. Because of our twenty four hour schedules and and try and. It we looked at it and I didn't realize that was, I thought it was just a presentation. And I was with Captain Martin at the time and I'm like, holy smokes, glad good thing we. Glad we didn't buy this one and realized that we had. So it just didn't work for the police department as far as scheduling for personnel because. Every day when we the shift commanders come to work. They send a schedule out to Dima so they know who's working. It also notifies, the officers can look in there and see what their schedule is. It's all on Metro right now. The Tyler part of it didn't work that well for the police department. But Planet incorporates all those things and and works with Tyler Technologies for. For the future. But that's not till like. After summer of next year.
So so. You mentioned Metro Tyler and what's the third one?
A planted is the software we like desire to purchase.
It's. It's more of an issue of scheduling than.
Scheduling and subpoenas.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
Thank you. Want to go back to the Tyler Technologies piece real quick. When did you realize this was an issue?
It's very, very early this year.
Okay. Was anyone from the Bureau on the planning team that helped to make this the selection team that helped? With I T to determine that Tyler Technologies was the system that the city was going to go with.
Yeah, that that was before I became the deputy. I'm not really sure. I'm maybe I'm not sure.
Okay. I'll ask the same question about when they come up here because it seems like, I remember when we had these conversations about. Going with Tyler Technologies, that this was a solution that would work for the city and now we're coming up. And you guys are providing us with information showing us that there are issues that. Had we known about maybe, you know, different decisions could have been made at the time, but. All I said of fires, well, and then maybe that was another question for the administration. Moving on, on the personnel side. Have seven unfunded positions, correct?
That's correct.
And comfortable with not funding them. I know we talked about where we fund them and where that's. It's okay to start the year off with non funded positions. Because I mean, a budget is what our, with the blueprint is what your vision is and. We're already starting off with seven unfunded. I understand how. Iron process works. You're planning on moving money later in the year, but we're good with starting off with. Not planning to fund, not planning to fund seven of those positions.
No. We can make that work. And hey, in a perfect world, we'd be able to fund everything, but we realize we can't and. We're part of the team is trying to present a balanced budget, so. Hate to say we make concessions, but I can't get everything I want. I understand that. Do I want a fully funded police department with all the positions? I do, but I also have an expectation that. We do try to. There's a lot of lines in here and we try to be good sewers of the money. And I know we can fill these positions that has been a lot of it. We can live with the seven unfunded for twenty twenty three.
Okay. Full complement number in your mind, what's that number? That that you would like to achieve. It's again, we're already starting off at. A seven member deficit going into twenty twenty three as proposed. What's the ideal compliment based upon our numbers we have here? We have. Current complement at one twenty nine F O P. Plus six management, which gives us to one thirty five.
Right.
At least that's in one document that I have.
Yep, I think one fifty three is the complete complement. If you add everything up, everything's fully funded, but including the additional corporal position. I think. And those numbers don't include this, the police managers.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I was just speaking about officers.
Yes, sir. One fifty three would be the number.
Okay. So from where we currently sit at one thirty five. One fifty three, we're look, that's eighteen officers where you would want eighteen additional officers is. What you would ideally be looking for.
Yes.
Okay. I guess. With respect to the recruitment strategy. How has that, what does that look like in terms of improving the diversity amongst? The the force. Hey, you've done, we've been trying to increase our recruitment. Have you brought in any? Diversity of officers through that. Process.
Yes, we have.
What's those twelve other agencies? And out for the twelve agencies, there were about. Maybe two hundred candidates like, you know, put in for the job. And then when it was test time, it's only like a hundred and thirty to like showed up and you might get. Seventy five to eighty to like pass. So since we started doing our own recruitment, it's the second year or so. We had numerous people of color put in for the job and we have and we have made conditional offers to people of color. Right now, we have a pageant mill at Hack. We have minority mill up at Hack. What we had to, the one that in trouble told him was let go. We have minority mill down in. So you know, and and I'm proud to say that we have more and more females putting in for the job, people of color. And there was a female up at Hack, she asked, it says a black female, but she turns her job down for a better paying job, but you know, since city council. Know was, we just announced a pay scale, we have more and more people putting in this, so our pay is.
Since city council has was gracious enough to pass a new pay skill, we have more and more people putting in for the job. One, one of the biggest drawbacks right now and is. Mopec is our governing body. And if you have a history of smoking weed or anything like that, you know, you can get certified to the state. And with these medical cards, you know, that these young kids have. You know, they believe it's okay and it isn't, so that they knocked a lot of people out. But we do have more and more people of color putting in.
Okay, but I think to your point earlier, so I mean, putting in for a position is one thing, but actually. Being completed and coming to work for the the city is is another.
And yes, it is, but we have more and more people passing the test. The psychological, physicals and everything like that and doing the academics of the hack.
Okay, let's just based upon the diversity numbers that were provided to us, I think. That's a start, but anything we can do to improve it because. The city that is overwhelmingly. The rising majority in this country of people of color, or black and brown mostly and are. The officers that are patrolling our streets and serving our community are overwhelmingly white and male. Anything we can do to. Improve those numbers would be of great assistance to our community. I said eighty four percent. White is very high in terms of the number of the officers that are. In our department. So the other thing we could do there, may have additional follow ups, but I'll. Defer to my colleagues right now. Thank you.
I know what you're talking about. I understand what you're saying. I respect what you're saying. But you know, Harrisburg City was in a situation where, you know, we needed officers. And to me, a good police officer is coming all colors. So you know, I could not, you know, in in our.
I I okay, I understand that. I appreciate every officer that is choosing to serve. All I'm saying is that in a city that is majority. The the rising majority in this country, black and brown people having eighty four percent of our officers being. White, hundred and two of those officers being white male, as well being female, we have. Based upon the information provided to us, we have the same number of white females as we do blacks on the on the force. We do. I'm again, I'm just. Everyone who's going to serve and serve, I'm just saying whatever we can do as a city to improve the number of. Black and brown people serving our community in the police force. Something that will be of good, great credit to our city. That's it.
I understand.
Thank you, Chair Green.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. President Bowers.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Good evening. I have a few questions and I did. Submit questions that I'm sure you you will review momentarily. But I wanted to follow up regarding the three new positions that you initially mentioned. The Technical Services Manager, the Confidential Secretary to the Deputy Chief and the Evidence Custodian. So for the Technical Services Manager. What quarter do you intend to fill this new role?
That is one where we'll have to advertise for. If approved, and that was our biggest problem is in twenty twenty one, when that position was approved. Was we did a lot of interviews and. It just didn't work out. We just could not find someone qualified for that position. We made it even more. It's hard to find someone with those kind of qualifications. We basically have to take someone and then train them on how to do that stuff. Is. Just as luck would have it. We think that if we offer the job is that. With the job description we built. That we have four after me data technicians right now. That one of those may take that job. So. That's one of the reasons we kind of went that direction, but as we looked at. You have to call a project something I call the Record Center of the Future. How do we want a record center? Really, how do we want the tech services? Parking enforcement and data technicians to be arranged as their after we pay scales? How are we going to supervise them? What do we want them to do? How do we want them to look? How can we make them a, because right now as a data tech, you can go data tech one, data tech two. That's it. Our future plan is data tech one through four, so there at least there's some over a period of time, some progression within that rank and same with the parking enforcement. If right now it's parking force one and two, we want to do one, two and three with progression over time. But we feel as if we get that position authorized. And then being the manager of parking and the data technicians, that one of those data techs are going to apply for that job.
Okay, so.
First quarter twenty twenty three, ma'am.
If you're expecting internal candidates, are you still going to open it up to members of the public to apply? Or will this just be an internal posting?
I just, that's where I go see Joni and say, this is what I like to do. What do you recommend? I'm a police guy. I'm like an H R guy. I really don't know all the.
I understand. I'm just trying to to get an idea because I think. Through the quarterly reporting, we've heard that there are vacancies and that they're difficult to fill. I'm just trying to understand if you, if there's an expectation across the board where. We may see a spike in internal promotions rather than providing an opportunity. To see a different applicant pool.
On that one in particular, I would like to do internal if we could.
Okay.
And if. If we're allowed and then if if we have to go external, we will. But that's what proves so difficult last time.
Okay, and if you wouldn't mind sharing the job description that you mentioned.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the Confidential Secretary to the Deputy Chief. You referenced a she, so I'm assuming is a is someone already in this role or is this?
I I have a secretary now.
Okay, okay.
It is an after me position.
Okay.
She does an amazing job.
Okay.
But there are things that she's not allowed to do. Because of their job description.
I understand.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. And then the Evidence Custodian. What quarter do you intend to fill this this role or vacancy?
The job description is already built. We'd have to talk about that with the F O P.
Okay.
And then once that is done. Uh, and then once that is done, I'd talk to Joni and, and we put that out on however HR sends out that job.
Okay. So that would be an external.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, my last question is, well, no, I have two more. The Planet Software. Since I guess none of Tyler is suitable and we're in the process of migrating, will Planet Software play well with the rest of Tyler or whatever we're migrating to?
Yes. So at the police department, we heavily use a program called Power DMS. And beginning I'm like, I don't know if this is really necessary. I was a lieutenant at the time and but as we started adding stuff to it, I saw the value of it rise in my mind at least. And now, just like the Chaplain program, I don't know what we do without it. Uh, over. We use it a lot. It just so happened that, uh, our accreditation manager who uses Power DMS for the entire accreditation process, they even do everything remotely. He, he can put all the general orders, all the proofs for years of, uh, uh, one, two and three that were being evaluated on. They can look at all this stuff because he has to load everything into the system. Uh, he went to a conference for Power DMS to become a more accomplished user, and it really worked. And he also found out that Power DMS owned a system called Planet. They just bought it. And we hadn't heard about it. Actually, we didn't realize we'd already got a briefing from them. We're like, eh, we were on the fence about it. He said, hey, if Power DMS took this over, they're going to make it better. So we asked this year for another look at it. Um, and brought IT in to look at it again, and it does work with time.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I know that's a long answer, but yes.
No, I just want to make sure because it's, it's a large undertaking, this migration. So if it, if it's there are some kinks, I guess we should be prepared for those. My last question is regarding the vehicles that were purchased this year. I know we had some that were impacted through accidents and other things. So I recognize they needed to be replaced. Um, but I guess with the gaming grant funding, you said that would purchase, eh, did you say two new vehicles with that?
Okay, so, and you're right. We, uh, in twenty, late twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two, we had a number of DUI accidents with police vehicles. Not that the police officers were, they were hit by drunk drivers.
Right.
Uh, and some we had an accident where we actually hit two police cars, uh. Looking at that, we looked at, at, and Rita and the, the city had decided to put in for the PA gaming grant. Um, so we went up there a month ago and made a presentation. And it was for a, a K nine vehicle and two police SUVs. And then with, under that capital account of four or five something, uh, for three hundred one thousand dollars, we planned on using seventy thousand dollars of that uh, to outfit two of the gaming grant vehicles, two SUVs, to, uh, outfit a police van. It is for twenty twenty-three lease. Outfit a vehicle purchased in twenty twenty-two, but not outfitted yet. Cause we didn't have enough money. We figured we're just going to wait instead of asking for more money. And then purchase up to four police SUVs if we can. But we don't know what the, the problem is, we don't know what the costs are for the twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three models. And, and, uh, we have good guest estimates, but until we really get invoices, everything else, we're not going to know.
Okay. You must have read my mind, the van. I, I know that was a discussion early this year, so.
Yeah, we did get a, uh, we looked a long time. So what happened was one of our vans was, uh, hit by a DUI driver. Um, what we ended to do is it, it wasn't new, but it wasn't old. Um, but it still had a lot of years of service left. So what we end up doing is one of our sergeants, he went down to VMC, he took all the equipment we could use out of it to include the, the cages in the back of the van. And then we looked for another van in the United States to purchase on a lot, not an order. And it was very, we could not find one. Uh, but the city actually had one. And so the commissioner worked with the city and we took that van and it's, uh, it is actually went into service a month and a half ago about. Um, so we saved a lot of money utilizing the equipment from the van. It was destroyed. And that actually driver had insurance so that whatever that amount was went back into the city's general fund.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bowers. Councilman Madsen, any questions?
Yeah. Um, so most of my questions, I guess you'll go over, or have already been asked. Um, but one I had is regarding, uh, to recruitment. Um, what are we doing to advertise or recruit more homegrown officers that are grew up in Harrisburg or sort of locally in the area? Um, are we doing anything outreach to schools? Um.
Oh, yeah, we, I mean, I know we had talked to Councilman Rodriguez about going up to the school and starting, uh, some programs up there. We haven't made that happen yet. I mean, I think we could. Uh, I know there was a initiative to do like a public safety uh, up at the, up at the school to get, uh, young students interested in being police, fire, EMS, you know, all good jobs, all good programs. Um, we just haven't, that has not come to fruition yet. I mean, I think that's a great idea. Uh, I know that the commissioner we had met with. I think they had offered about, um, paying, uh, students to go to hack, you know, and trying to recruit them to go there because they have a public safety program, but to be act one twenty certified, you really have to go to a, a, a police academy and go and get a criminal justice degree, but you don't need a degree to be a police officer. Uh, it's nice to have, but not necessary. But truly to answer your question, like, we do things around in the city, you know, like at the farm show and things like that, but we do billboards. Most of our billboards are within the Harrisburg city and metropolitan area. Uh, but like of the job fairs we did last year, all the ones in the city were up at the farm show. And so I don't believe, I don't remember us going to the school to recruit from there. And you gotta remember, you gotta be twenty-one years old too. So that's another, even when we talk to them when they're eighteen, still got three more years to wait.
Um, just, so what I've seen, uh, through working with various trades organizations, if we expose our youth to the option, um, they may, we may get better results just because they may not consider it an option, or they may not have had an opportunity to ask an officer what it's like to be an officer. Um, I know the CSAs are present in the schools. Could we utilize them to, I, I know they're not exactly officers, but at least to an intro, um, to emergency response or law enforcement.
Yeah, some of our, uh, people on our, I'd say recruiting team, but who go out and do a lot of recruiting are the community policing officers, starting Josh Hammer's one who usually goes out and does a lot of that with, uh, Westfuduke and Tim Flynn. Um, but we could do that. I think the, the only issue with the high schools when we go to them is the age. Yep. You know, because they're still going to have to wait a few more years to do it. Now, one of the things we talked about with the CSAs was that's a good springboard, if you will, or a, a, a platform where you could get in. You get to see how the city works, the city government works, the resources available to it. Um, how the utilization of the Doff County Communication Center, um, interaction with the police, interaction with citizens, see what the problems are. Uh, so our next test is in April of twenty twenty-three. Are any of the CSAs going to take that test? I'm not sure. We'll have to see. But it's available to them, so.
It's answered the question, sir. We have been in conversations with Harrisburg School District where we're going to have officers go in the classrooms and talk to about career opportunities to the students there, EMS, fire, police. Um, they've been open as of recent, was doing that. We have had conversations with Dr. Skeet and, uh, they were looking to, uh, uh, start a program where, um, they're willing to take, um, high school seniors and pay their way through college if they want to be, um, criminal justice majors and you know, be a, um, Harrisburg officer. They have conversations with, um, Central Penn because they have a pretty good criminal justice program there. They also had conversations with Shippensburg. I believe that we were down there.
We, last couple of years, we've been in Shippensburg.
And we've been to Philadelphia recruiting. We've been to some really big places, Baltimore, you know, trying to get people of color, targeting people of color.
Yeah, I, and I hear that on the more representation, but I'm thinking of just, I don't care what color they are, as long as they grew up in this community. Um, because I think what avoids some of the things that didn't happen initially here in this community, but in others is things tend to escalate, um, for whatever reason. But if you're interacting with somebody you grew up with and know, I know that that would automatically disarm me if I was pulled over at a situation or encounter with an officer where I may be a little standoffish or whatever situation. Um, so that's just sort of my thoughts there is as we're looking over this and trying to address diversity is just, we can um, develop programming to just, uh, again, expose our youth to the opportunities that these career paths offers, because your point doesn't require college debt. Um, there are a lot of people that go to college, uh, freshman sophomore year and realize this is not for them. In the back of their mind, um, if they're a Harrisburg resident, hey, maybe, maybe law enforcement could be a good career pathway. Um, that was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Yes, thank you. Good evening to you both. Thank you for being here, though you have to, but everybody doesn't do what they have to do, so.
That's why I'm sitting here.
Thank you. Um, yes, I did have a few question. Um, just really quick to piggyback off of Councilman Madsen. I, you know, I agree to just trying to get into the schools the best you can. I know they're young. They can't apply for the test yet. Um, but I will say, I always bring up my teaching, I know. Um, it's my day job, but I just see a lot of, um, it sparked something for them. Um, at Milton Hershey, we have Career Mondays. So, um, just now we brought in the marketer for, um, Hershey Corporations. And the kids are only in second grade. They're not going to be a marketer right now, you know, they got a lot of schooling to go through, but, um, it did spark something for them. And like now, when they see commercials or when we're doing something in class, they're like, oh, marketers do that. Marketers make that. I'm like, yeah, that's true. So, um, you know, whatever you can do to get in there, just to, um, I think lift that population up at the high school and just show them this is a path you can have. Um, it's never too young to start, so. I apologize to you all for everything you're doing. I see you all in the community. Um, thank you. Um, my, um, my questions were, I just had a few. Um, the one was on the Planet Software.
Okay.
Is if I'm saying it right, is it like plan and it, or is it like?
It's all one word together.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm saying it right. Um, how much will the yearly maintenance be for it?
Thank you. Two different spots on our budget thing.
Okay.
And one thing is, I didn't think about that. I didn't put it on the slide either. For Planet in and of itself, this Planet Power DMS maintenance and license cost in twenty twenty-four, eight thousand projected. Potentially covered and fooled by twenty twenty-two JAG. So Doffin County, uh, annually, they put in for a, a, uh, it's a JAG grant. I don't remember what it stands for. But the they pay for certain, uh, things that the county is interested in us doing. Uh, one of them is like, uh, it's, uh, it's called Cody Cobra. I know. Uh, but what it basically does is it works with our record management system. You put, uh, you just put your data in like you normally do. But other jurisdictions can use Cobra to view your stuff, view only of, of, of a region. But the county pays for the stuff and they pay for it through the JAG grant. And here is, they put in for us to get it through the JAG grant.
The, the yearly maintenance. Okay, to, to buy the Planet Software is in the grant. Okay.
So it's, okay, here it is right here. It's twenty twenty-three initial purchase, twenty-six hundred, one-time fee, seven thousand dollars per year. That's what it would be.
So maintenance a year would be twenty-seven thousand or, or seven thousand?
Two thousand six hundred would be the one time and then seven thousand per year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And, um, my other question was, um, and that's for as many years as we have it, or is there like a, a contract? Like you only get?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
Yeah. And I know Mr. Boardner is heavily involved in doing, uh, there's a lot of, uh, Tyler technology briefings every day. So he knows it's, it's next year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So that's just more information to come once it gets.
Yep.
To that point. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my other question was, and I don't know if you're going to know this because it, it goes with the planet again, and I'm not sure if it's something would have come out later, but like how much would professional development be? Like once you get the program, is there someone who comes and gives you professional development, you and the other officers or the?
You, they do.
The Bureau on professional development on how to use it.
Yeah, well, we had briefing was months ago. It basically, uh, they, they come in and they help you configure it, configure the, the software to how your department is operating. And they can adjust the, uh, how, maybe how leave is accrued or uh, how court time, if it's paid, if you're being paid standby at point five, one point five for a two-hour MDJ quarter appearance or a there's endless possibilities.
Right.
All, just like in Tyler, because I've seen some of the Tyler briefings and wow, that's, it is some pretty amazing software. Uh, boy, there's a lot of work to get it to work the way you want it to. And that's what they said was, hey, we're going to have to sit down. We're going to show us how your platoons are made up. And what complicates it is every year, uh, we just concluded, uh, is November. Uh, in, in November, we did shift picks, which we pick our shifts for next year for the patrol officers. So every January or every, I think it's January ninth is our switch every day. We would have to realign the platoons within the system so they could plan out the, so they'll help you configure all that stuff. So one is to, the one, I think that twenty-six dollar, twenties, two thousand six hundred dollars is to configure the system.
Okay.
Set it up the way you need it to be set up and then, uh, to train the people on how to use it.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to know, like, I see the initial price for it, but I just wanted to know, like, coming further out, like how much it would cost the city throughout, you know, because you know, you know, you're going to need the training. And then like, do they stop the training and never come back? And is there someone designated that is to train new, uh, you know, employees that come? Just, just trying to look at the overall cost of it.
Even for like, uh, Metro, we, we still train the new officers on Metro. We do that internally.
Right.
Once we, once you know how to use it, just like Cody.
Mm-hmm.
They showed us how to use it. But now we have supervisors and officers, when there's new, uh, employees coming in, they will sit with them and train them. This is how you write an initial, uh, report form. This is how you do this, this, I do that, this, how you get to these different screenings. This is the data they're looking for. So once we get trained on it and as supervisors, they're metro whizzes, uh, they can train all the new employees on, on how it works.
Which is.
Once we get it, we'll, we'll get it.
Right. And then you can train others that when they come. I understand that. Thank you. My last question was, I saw in the, the packet we got with the answers in there.
Okay.
There was, um, Harrisburg Bureau of Police Recruitment Statistics and.
Oh, you did get that then?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, excellent. I was trying to reference that earlier and I.
Yeah, it's in here. I don't know which one. I can't tell you. It's just.
It's in the.
It's the one that you have all the number. Yeah.
It's the only table, I think, in the entire.
Yes. It's a very interesting table. So I was just wondering, um, just helping with recruitment purposes. Is there any way to break down the individuals who applied and being able to break down their gender, their race and where they live? Not their address exactly, but if, what cities they're coming from, just to see who is applying. So I think it's, you're able to then say, okay, we're not getting anybody from this section or this section or here, and this is where we need to recruit. So I think it's, you're able to then say, okay, we're not getting anybody from this section or this section or here, and this is where we need to recruit at. Is there any way to, that we could see what that is and even you all could see the breakdown of that?
We hmm. I think the answer is yes, but it would take a lot of work to go back in time to look all that up. Because I know the system does capture that stuff. So how we got these statistics is. Uh, Sarah, what's? Oh, Sarah Bradnick is our uh court liaison and special events coordinator. She also does recruiting.
Okay.
We put a lot of stuff on her and she's really good at it. Uh, in conjunction with HR, who we have Officer Colin Korninger works up there. The Police One app is where all of, if you want to apply, you see like on the City of Harrisburg website, maybe you got one of our cards with a QR code.
Right.
Maybe you saw a social media thing and you're like, yeah, I wanna go. Uh, you apply on Police App. Eventually, all your app, your entire application goes there also.
Okay.
And. That is where we would be able to get the data from. I don't know, like when they close out, because right now we're in, still in the August. Uh, twenty twenty two recruitment phase. So I know that one's still open. Uh, it's gonna close shortly in December. I don't remember if we can get back into that system to look up statistically what it is, but. You probably could.
If you could, I I I think all of us would be interested just to see, you know, what it looks like, just as a helping tool. That's it. That's all my questions. Thank you so much again.
Alright, thank you. Um, if anyone else has any questions, feel free to ask them now before we move on to the list of questions that were asked beforehand by the police department.
Yes, Chair Green, I have a few. Um, thank you first and foremost for being here, Commissioner DC. Um, I read about um the GVI grant. Was that earned or are we still waiting the results from that?
Uh, we were told that we, the the. Grant will be awarded fourteen December to everybody. This is across the Commonwealth who applied. It seems like a stretch to me that it'd be done so quickly, but that's what they told us was fourteen December is when we'll know.
Okay, and with that, um as far as gunshot detection, are we still looking to utilize maybe ShotSpotter or someone in that industry? To assist us?
That is in that uh the gun violence investigation and prosecution grant that you just referenced.
Absolutely. So it definitely is still in consideration?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, absolutely. And um, there's been times where I've gotten emails or just calls about foul language in the field from officers that. Um, being like trained or how is that being worked on case by case? I do understand sometimes it can get a bit uh verbal in the field. Uh, but as far as the officers are concerned, how are we going about that on a case to case?
You mean if like we know about it?
Yeah, yeah, with like the foul language to just residents or um coming to the scene of a crime. Uh, I'm sure majority of the time it's not intentional or it's off of the energy of who they're speaking with, but. Uh, when it does come about, is that something we train kind of not to do, to kind of be more reserved or do they kind of have free will or case by case? How was that approached?
No, if, okay, so if uh, if I go to a call and someone doesn't like the way they, I speak to them or what I say. Um, if they call downtown to the police station, they can talk to a supervisor. They can review it on the spot, talk to their concerns, address what they have to say. If they feel like they want to file a formal complaint. On our city uh, on the city website under the police, you can, there's a form there you can fill out and send to the Bureau of Police. You can come down to the police lobby, the atrium lobby, fill out a form there, turn in a complaint and it will be investigated.
How do you feel personally, DC, about just foul language from officers to residents?
Me personally?
Just personal?
I'm not a big swear.
Okay.
You know, but. Um, do people use swear words? I'm sure they do out there. Um, depends on the situation. And here's the thing is, and police officers at the Harrisburg Police know this is, hey, you gotta be professional out there.
Absolutely.
Because when you're not, I mean, it just, it looks bad for the Bureau of Police, looks bad for the city, and looks bad for police in general.
Absolutely.
So, no, I'm not a swearer and people in the department know that. But do people swear out there when you're trying to arrest someone and they're.
Definitely.
Fighting argument?
Absolutely. And how do you feel the first year of um full online reporting has uh helped the department?
Uh, I had high hopes for it and it's worked out better than I thought. Um, I think there's a. It was, I think uh there might be a statistic in here. I don't remember what it is. Yeah, there was like, it was, this is our, really our first full year of it. And just the time save, there's, there's several benefits to it is, if. Sometimes when you call the police, it could take you two minutes to get there, twenty minutes, two hours, two days. Uh. If, if it is a crime that involves something that doesn't involve a suspect. Maybe my car was hit, it was parked on the street, or someone uh vandalized my uh, my mailbox or something on my. I can go right online, I could fill out the police report. Some uh, police officer will read it. If there's no questions, it's approved. If there's. We get a lot ones from outside the city that are not for the city of Harrisburg. Uh, but just a time saving for the citizen, not having to call Dauphin County Dispatch, wait for a police officer to get there. Come down to our lobby and wait to be in a queue to get a report taken. It's just a lot more convenient. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that thing is available to take a set number of reports. There's frequently asked questions on our City of Harrisburg website that they can look at to see if they qualify for an online report. You don't have to talk to the police. You can get a report number for your insurance company. It, I think it's a big time savings.
Now, does that information come to the city directly or still through the county and get filtered through?
Um, so what happens is, that's actually a a software that we uh, they purchased years, wait, quite a while ago. Uh, it just got enacted in uh December of twenty twenty one, I believe. Uh. But you fill it out online, once it's approved by a police department, uh, an officer, it automatically downloads it into our record management system. It doesn't have to be touched again. The county can refer you right to a uh phone number and you could actually do it on your phone if you wanted to.
Awesome. And then with the um, I guess the uptick in like fentanyl and a few overdoses, that's what's happening, not just in the city but nationwide. Out of the fifty-four times um Narcan was dispensed, how many times you would say that has actually saved a life?
Uh, it's probably, uh, you know, I asked that question today. Uh, my secretary actually does, receives all the Narcan reports. Um. And she gets the Narcan from the county or from an EMS agency. And I said, hey, do we actually keep track of how many lives we save? And she's like, I assume it was fifty-four.
Yeah.
You know, uh, but. That's a great question.
Right, right.
May, that may not be accurate, but I believe that answer is fifty-four.
You would hope every time you have to dispense it, it's definitely um.
And don't forget, sometimes we use more than one dose.
Okay.
You know what I mean, so.
And then um with the Ring Porch Light Initiative, uh, did we get any leadway or information about that?
Uh, that also was part of the Gun Violence Investigation and Prosecution Grant, so we won't know about that project until fourteen December. And we've already been talking with uh, Tri County is meeting with them. I did one Zoom call with them. And I'm going to an in-person meeting in December. Uh, they're very, they are doing the same exact thing up on the hill also.
Okay, because I remember my colleagues had a few questions about reliability and where we stand. I just wanted to see if there's any updated information.
Yep, uh, that, it's uh, we're on standby until fourteen December and we're trying to find a partner, which I think. We're pretty close to being successful on that.
Awesome. And then for my last question, how far up in a compliment do you feel we should be before we have officers like on the beat? Walk in the neighborhoods again?
Uh, there are some platoons who already do that.
Okay.
Um, it all depends on their manning for that day, the the calls for service, and if there's any other details going on. Um. So it it is really, it's that platoon supervisor who makes that call. And what they basically do is generally they schedule that ahead of time is uh, it'd be like Tom and Dennis. Uh, in two days on the schedule, your Foot Patrol and District Five up on the hill of Thirteenth and Berry. Uh, so as long as everyone still shows up to work, there's not any big events going on and nothing has changed. Uh, they will, they will do that.
Then um has the current vision um for the CSA program changed at all from uh last, I'd say last budget season? We kind of updated the manual or we're still right there projected where?
They solidified their, I mean, the job description is the same.
Okay.
They solidified their responsibilities uh in a manually produced, and I think April of uh this year. Um, so their core mission hasn't changed, you know. I think there was one other question about uh twenty twenty-three goals. Uh, and unfortunately, um, I haven't seen Chardan or Milo since, or Thanksgiving, so I didn't realize. I would have asked that before, but I didn't.
Are we still intending to expand eventually or we're kind of?
I'm sorry, listen.
Or are, is the intention is still expand on the program eventually or will we kind of keep it at six?
As you can see, we didn't ask for that this year.
Right.
Uh, I think, talking to Captain Hooper and Director Houston, I think they would like to expand the program, but.
Okay.
I think we still need to refine some of the processes there, build data and and. It's, it's against, it's just gonna take some time, you know, to get out there in the neighborhoods and figure out the best way to utilize these CSAs. They did a lot of good stuff this year.
Awesome.
There's a lot more we can do with that.
I agree. Thank you.
And if I could um answer that one question about officers out there talking, sir, I mean cursing at people. As everybody here knows, uh, my officers, they wear body worn cameras and the body worn cameras they're on. So if we get a complaint that the officers are out there cursing or acting up or doing anything. I have uh, DC or my body camera person, they can pull the video. And we go over the video and if we see any violation regardless of of how small is, we do take care of that.
Awesome, thank you.
It isn't over overlooked or anything like that.
Thank you for that. Um, no further questions, Chair Green. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions before we get to the the questions that were asked beforehand? Then you know, we can proceed on with the uh list of questions that you guys provided the answers to us for.
Just to clear, so do you want me just to read the question and answer the question?
Yes, it's it's pretty much just a reading answer. I know sometimes the administration would do it on a PowerPoint, but.
I got you.
Not one, if you just uh read and read.
I got you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I'll start right now. Uh, how many active employees are currently in the police department? Can you list them by division? How many vacancies do you have? Uh, so, uh, what I did was, is I wrote this document is, it was based off of what we asked for for twenty twenty-three. Okay, so overall, the total for management would be seventeen of nineteen positions, never be as effective one January twenty twenty-three. FOP, one twenty-nine of one hundred forty-six positions, AFSMI, eighteen of eighteen. Broken down by division under the Officer of the Commissioner, Management, four of four positions. FOP, five of five positions, and AFSMI, zero of zero positions. Uniform Patrol Division, Management, one position, one filled. FOP, eighty of ninety-eight positions, AFSMI, one of one. Under the Criminal Investigation Division, Management, two positions, two filled. FOP, twenty-four posi, twenty-eight positions, uh, twenty-four filled, and AFSMI, one position, one filled. For the Technical Services Division.
So our numbers are off a little bit. I've got twenty-five filled, twenty-eight positions. For uh Criminal Investigation Division, and then for Uniform Patrol, I have eighty positions and ninety. Or ninety-two positions and eighty filled. I don't know if it was just a typo and and.
Nope.
Transcribing, but.
I made an adjustment later.
Okay.
Yep, so, so going back on Uniform Patrol is uh. It should, okay, so for. You had ninety-two?
Correct.
It it should be ninety-eight. For the Uniform Patrol Division, for the FOP, it's eighty of ninety-two. And then in the Criminal Investigation Division for the FOP, it's actually. Let me say, it it should be twenty-four positions, not twenty-five. Because that's where you had twenty-five, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, after I sent the original document, uh, Jen called and said, hey, your math doesn't add up. So I went back and looked and I'm like. Oh, yeah, you're right.
Okay, and just to, to review one more time, because you said both numbers. For Uniform Patrol Division, it's eighty of ninety-eight or eighty of ninety-two?
Eighty of ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, okay.
And then under CID, FOP, twenty-four filled, twenty-eight positions. We good? Okay, sorry. Uh, Technical Services Division. Uh, Management, six of eight positions filled, FOP, five of five, and AFSMI, eight of eight. In, so when you add those number, it's, the Community Services Division has Management, four of four positions. FOP, five of ten, and AFSMI, eight of eight. There are ten officers in the Hack and Temple Academies, so when you, they're technically assigned to the Technical Services Division. Uh, as they are in training. And throughout the entire FTO process, they stay there until they're assigned to Uniform Patrol Division at the very end, if that makes any sense. So, so there's not really a position form, it's just, they would eventually fill a vacancy within the Uniform Patrol Division. Did I answer uh the second question of how many vacant positions are there in the department?
Yes.
Why are some of the positions zeroed out? I have a feeling you have the old version of what was said.
Probably, you can read your version.
I'll read an updated version.
Alright.
Someone who is a better writer than I wrote. Uh, there are seven vacancy slots that have been zeroed out due to budget constraints. The Bureau of Police currently have five officers in Hack Academy and five officers in the Temple Academy. We've already made additional officers and I recruits in the last hiring round. These recruits will fill nine of sixteen vacancies we currently have, and have plans to start the Hack Academy in nine, January twenty twenty-three. Although we could potentially fill all sixteen vacancies in January, due to higher payroll and operational costs, we need to make concessions to enable the City of Harrisburg to present a balanced budget to City Council. Uh, previously I had read one about the advertising budget, ma'am. Would you like me to do that again?
Uh, I'm fine with the previous answer.
Okay. And if you, I know you have a, you need an electronic copy of this table. It is an interesting table. About the recruitment. I didn't realize you had that.
Uh, we have it, but if if you'd like to give us a a digital copy, that'd be great. Digital never hurts.
I can send it to you electronically and as, I'll see if we can break down those numbers you'd referenced, ma'am.
Okay.
But as long as you guys are okay with that, uh, that answer to that question, I can read the whole thing. I think I read parts of it. What is the reasoning for reducing medical and psychological exam budget? So the Medical Psychological Exam four-two-one-zero-one-six budget line was reduced from thirty-four thousand three hundred fifty dollars. In twenty twenty-two to nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollars in twenty twenty-three. Through assistant presenting a balanced budget, Kutcher made this budget line for the following reasons. There's money budgeted for emergency canine expenses, ten thousand dollars. This line existed as a backup to the Canine Foundation as they currently pay for the canine medical care. We have not used this line in the past, but it's there in case the foundation is unable to cover the medical bill. The police recruitment physical exam is reduced from seven thousand to two thousand. Again, the budget was for twenty exams at three hundred fifty each. Although we hope to hire over seventeen recruits, the hospital does not charge us to date for this service. Uh, if we had to pay the bill, the money was budgeted to pay for the service. Lastly, sixteen hundred dollars, one thousand six hundred dollars would budget for a backup psychologist for Dr. Lagoon. The psychologist we had listed retired, we have not been able to find a suitable backup doctor, and we have never used this line to date. It was, it was removed to present a balanced budget. And I think it needs to be said is, one thing about the police budget is, it is a. We underutilize our budget. There are lines in there for contingencies that we feel like we have to have. And I think the classic example is the canine. Uh, there is a canine foundation that supports the canine dogs for the Harrisburg Bureau of Police. They purchased the dogs for the city. We had to provide an officer, we have to send them to training. Uh, uh, the foundation pays for the training of the dog, the housing of the dog, the food of the dog, veterinarian care of the dog. But there may be a time in a day where the foundation either uh ceases to exist, can't afford to pay a bill. That we felt we had to have money. That we felt we had to have money budgeted for. And those lines have been built in the budget. We haven't used them for, and that's why we always under. Called bad planning, I'm trying to have money available if the bill does come up. It's a known expense that could occur in the future, but I'm not a budget guy. I'm just a guy who's trying to have money available in case a bill comes. Without having to come back and try and reallocate. And that's why those were in there. When it came time that we were trying to present a balanced budget, I went through and I looked, I'm like. I made operational decisions. That's why those are there. Any questions on that one?
I don't have any questions on it. If anyone has any questions throughout, feel free to, you know, just turn your mic on and ask your question.
Sounds good to me. What are your department goals this upcoming year? To deploy law enforcement resources in the most efficient and effective manner. Prevent and solve crime and prosecute the offenders. Continue deployment of and utilization of a problem oriented policing strategy. Preservation of property and life. Reach a complement of officers and enable the Bureau to more consistently utilize foot patrols in neighborhoods. Procure and update technology to enable the Bureau of Police to respond to calls for service quicker and provide transparency transparency to the community. Part of our goals, and there are others, are utilization of a spot shotter or similar type technology. Update our body worn cameras. Utilization of Cell Bright, which is a, it's a cellphone download service. That during a criminal investigation, if they have a phone that they need to get the contents of, they can use that program to download the. The Ring Camera and the Portlight Initiative. Any questions on those goals?
I have a question regarding the technology. So. You mentioned possibly utilizing grant funding for the body worn cameras to replace those or update them.
Yes, ma'am.
The other technology that you mentioned, the Shot Spotter or similar technology. Cell Bright Ring Cameras and Portlight Initiative are they. Funded through this particular budget, or are you anticipating grant funding for all of it?
So the body worn cameras, I think I explained earlier about net. Turnover year that we're taking, we can do this for another year with the stuff we have now.
Right. And that the local law enforcement grant may cover any updates or new.
Yes, and each one of these ones listed here are grant funded technology.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am. Every one of them. Except for the body worn camera.
Okay.
I can do it in bulk. I'll do it through the grant. If I gotta, if they say, no, you didn't get that part of the grant. I have one year to figure out how we're, because it's gonna be a big bill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Two questions with, as one with respect to the goals. So one of the goals that you mentioned, again, was to reach the complement of offices that enables the Bureau to more consistently utilize foot patrols in neighborhoods. What's that number?
I. For us to be consistent about it. I'd probably say about two or three more officers per patoon.
Okay, and then if I'm going backwards then, with the positions that were. Erode out again. Should those positions be able to be filled? Where's that, where's that funding coming from? Again, we're trying to present a balanced budget, but if we're, we know there's vacancies that aren't funded. Able to fill them at some point in the year. Where would we grab that funding from?
We, if if we manage our. Our promotions correctly and our recruitment and put. The right people in the right positions. That number will be filled in the Harrisburg Bureau of Police minus those seven positions because they're not funded.
Councilman Major, to your question, if we are going to fill the seven zeroed out, how would we do it? Would it be the source of funding?
Yeah.
That would be an administrative decision. The mayor would come down with with the commissioner and the business administrator. Based on everything else that was spent at that point in the year. As you know, the budget's sort of a plan. And then things do and don't happen, and then you reevaluate as the year goes on. So I don't think you can predict where the extra money is going to come from in December and November before you get to the middle of next year.
Right. No, I understand, but I know, I know, and trying to present a balanced budget. It also doesn't feel genuine to me when you know there are positions that you want to fill, that you purposely zero out. Knowing at some point we're going to have to potentially fill them, particularly if we're looking to increase the complement. While the public safety good that the administration is touting. I believe that, I believe it's all sincere, but just in terms of these positions, that just seems. I I get it. We have to shuffle things around to do what we need to do to present a balanced budget, but. You know, understanding that there are seven to nine positions that I know they desire to fill.
I I think that's probably a question for the mayor and the business administrator for the year that goes on. We are fortunate, I sit through the civil service to have many more candidates right now than we had two years ago. I mean, two years ago, it was pretty abysmal about how many applicants we had, so we are in a different place than we were.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Next one, what are some of your accomplishments this current year? City of Harrisburg has experienced twenty homicides in twenty twenty-two. Three homicides have two victims. Fourteen of the homicide investigations have concluded with an arrest. The Bureau of Police Community Services Division earned a group violence intervention grant of five hundred thousand dollars, which is the beginning of this year. Which the Bureau expects to assist in driving down the number of shootings in the city of Harrisburg in twenty twenty-two and the future. Bureau of Police applied for two grants to local law enforcement and the gun violence investigation and prosecution grant. Which, if awarded, will further assist the Bureau of Police with gun investigations, assist in preventing gun violence. Increase the technology available to Bureau of Police and the city of the hair, city of Harrisburg. The Bureau continued to focus on training the entire Bureau with the twenty twenty-two focus on case law, mobile field force, de-escalation, defensive tactics. Tourniquet and stop the bleed training. Although training qualified now, the Bureau of Police focused for training in twenty twenty-three is response to an active shooter. Last time the entire Bureau attended this training was twenty twenty-one. The Bureau of Police utilized Narcan fifty-four times to date in twenty twenty-two. That says up today. Twenty twenty-two will be the first full year of the Bureau of Police Online Reporting System. The system called Doors enables a citizen to file an online report at their convenience. To date, two thousand one hundred sixty-one online reports, reports have been filed by citizens. This saves a citizen's time and a patrol officer's time. The Bureau of Police has completely revised thirteen general orders and has twelve general orders in active provision right now, but not completed in twenty twenty-two. The majority of orders are available on the City of Harrisburg website. Questions on that? What type of vehicle equipment will be ordered under the budget line four-five-three-zero-zero-four? Bureau of Police intends on utilizing three hundred one thousand dollars in four-five-three-zero-zero-four in a falling manner. Seventy thousand dollars to outfit. Three police SUVs and one van, and then to procure outfit and field for police SUVs for twenty twenty-three. The second set of questions, if you're ready. What is the current complement of officers? Two hundred nine FOP members, six police management, one thirty-five. Since the recruiting strategy has increased, what is the department's diversity complement? We have three Asian officers, two male, one female, six Hispanic officers, five male, one female. Twelve black officers, eleven male, one female, hundred fourteen white officers. Hundred two males and twelve females. Or any questions?
Just a comment. Those two were my questions so far, and the next question regarding language that your Bureau employees speak. Just thanks for answering those questions. I think it's always helpful for everyone to have a better understanding of the lay of the land of each Bureau. So thank you.
Are any current employees in the Bureau bilingual? Yes, we have six Spanish speaking, two Farsi and one French. And one thing, even seeing the officers on the street, I mean, we have our city issued cell phones. Even on, I'm part of the Doors management team, so when people ask questions on Doors and they write to me in Spanish. I cut and paste it into my Google. It translates it to English. I answer them in English and translate to Spanish and I send an email back. I've seen officers on the street use our city issue cell phones using Google Translate, and it works great. Criminal Investigation ones, that's a little bit different, and Dalton County utilizes language line, which which that helps. Now, we don't subscribe to that service, but we, one of the detectives asked me actually just this year. If we could look at like a. For some of the lesser known languages to utilize that similar type service, and we are looking into that. When do you fill, when do you intend to fill the detective vacancy? What quarter of twenty twenty-three external candidates? We expect to fill that in the second quarter of twenty twenty-three. Detective position is a contractual promotion. Candidates must be a patrol officer for two years and have completed a ninety-day career development in the Criminal Investigation Division. And while they're out there doing that, they are assigned to thirty days as an adult detective, thirty days as a juvenile detective, and thirty days as a vice detective. So they get the full CID experience. Can the candidates then apply, interview and are scored before a final selection is made. So those are all internal candidates. And then I, did you get the job description of detective?
No, we did not. We did not receive any of the job descriptions requested.
Okay. I'll get those to you tonight. They were in the the email with this, so I'll get those to you tonight. When do you intend to fill the forensic investigator vacancy? What quarter of twenty twenty-three external candidates? The forensic investigator vacancy will be filled in the third or fourth quarter. There may be an opportunity for the local law enforcement grant is approved, fund this position, and that may change the decision making of when to fill the position. It is dependent on when the officers graduate from the police academy, finish the in-house training, which is six weeks, and the field training program of twelve weeks. So I guess a good question, like about the detective vacancy and why a second quarter twenty twenty-three. The reason is, I think earlier explained that we have five cadets at Hack Academy right now. They will graduate in December, do in-house training, do field training, and be available in April. So that is the second quarter. So when those five candidates are available to be assigned to the platoon. We intend on, intend on making various moves within the Bureau. To upward progression to detective supervisor and other positions. And then we'll make that decision, but we have five positions to move to different spots. The. The officers at the Temple Academy, they'll graduate in March, so by June-ish, July, early July, they'll be available for the battunes. That's five more. The people who are going to go to the January nine hack class, they will get out of the academy and. Say early, late June, early July, and it'll probably be September before they are available. That number will be anywhere from nine, I'm sorry. From nine. It could maybe were from nine to whatever the number ends up being. So they will be, that's when we'll be able to make all these different moves. And I will share the job description of the forensic investigator. When do you intend to fill the police lieutenant vacancy? What quarter of twenty twenty-three, internal or external? The lieutenant vacancy will be filled in the second quarter. Internal candidates only. Current promotion list is vacant. Next promotional exam is scheduled for twenty-five March twenty twenty-three. We expect to promote promote in the April timeframe. I will share that I have the job description for the lieutenant. When do you intend to fill the three least sergeant vacancies? What quarter of twenty twenty-three, internal or external? Sergeant vacancies will be filled in the second quarter. Internal candidates only. Current sergeant promotion list is vacant. Next promotional exam is scheduled for twenty-five March twenty twenty-three. We expect to promote promote all in the April timeframe. And the reason why we're able to do that is because they're already supervisors and moving them up and putting them in a different position doesn't change anything. We don't have to draw from the police officer pool to, and they already, they already exist. When do you intend to fill the two police corporal vacancies? What quarter of twenty twenty-three, internal, external, external? One corporal vacancy was filled twenty-two November. Is, did that right before Thanksgiving? We expect to fill the other corporal vacancy in the first quarter, if you approve that additional position. Next promotional exam is scheduled for twenty-five March twenty twenty-three. Expect to promote more corporals in the third and fourth quarter as officers graduate off the field training program. Just what we, what we just talked about. When do you intend to fill the sixteen police officer trainee vacancies? What quarter of twenty twenty-three, internal, external recruiting? There are nine patrol officer vacancies, seven are not funded. The Bureau has nine conditional officer, offers, officers for the nine January twenty twenty-three Hack Police Academy. We are ending a recruiting effort that began six August twenty twenty-two. The Bureau is conducting interviews, potentially eleven in December for placement into the nine January twenty twenty-three Hack Police Academy. There are three other available academies in twenty twenty-three. Temple in May of twenty twenty-three, Hack July of twenty twenty-three, and Temple September of twenty twenty-two. Questions on that? This is a community service aids program continuing to be evaluated. What goals have been accomplished over the course of the year? What goals have been established for twenty twenty-three? Captain Hooper and Director Houston are continuously evaluating the community service aids assignments and updating how they conduct their business. Division established the CSA manual in twenty twenty-two that delineated their area's emphasis for CSA utilization. Those are the seven listed there. I'll go over them. One, city ordinances. Two, parking complaints. Three, traffic control. Four, traffic accidents. Five, business checks. Six, quality of life complaints. And seven, community. Captain Hooper and Director Houston are both on leave, unavailable to express their twenty twenty-three goals for their decision. That is the last set of questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on on these responses? I don't really have any questions. Most of mine have been answered. I tried to to make sure I got them to you early. I will say I would request for Captain Hooper and Director Houston to provide their goals for twenty twenty-three. Hopefully, they can make themselves available before the end of budget season, which we vote on December thirteenth. We will have hearings the rest of this week. If you could let me know when they'd be available, we can get them on an agenda to be able to present that that information.
The other, the one question I did have, which I'll pose to the police, but I'll also. Just just sent the email to our city clerk to make sure that the rest of the administration has. I know we've asked this in years past. And got an answer, but the number of officers that actually reside in the city of Harrisburg. Versus. Also, I think at last, I can remember, I think last year or the year before, it's around, it was a very small number. It was seven or between seven and ten. But if we can get that information, and then I'll also make the same request of the administration to see how many. Employees reside within the city of Harrisburg.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you all for being here tonight. A couple of things that I believe were asked throughout this period to follow up on is for you all to send a copy of the new job descriptions. Send a copy or a breakdown of the recruitment stats and locations of where the recruits live. An update on the CSA goals for twenty twenty-three and the number of officers that reside inside the city. Thank you. I appreciate you all being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As we get ready to move to. As we get ready to move to fire next, I will ask that we can take a 10 minute recess so that we can, um, transition over, use the restroom, grab a snack, wherever we need to do. So that will bring us back at 7:40. Started here soon. Well, restart it. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So next we have, there we are. Next we have a fire bureau. So I will turn it over to you all to, uh, give us your presentation. And then if you could go over the questions that were previously posed by council, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. So, uh, we did not put a slideshow together, uh, in an effort to streamline the budget meeting and hopefully the quarterly reports that we've been providing to you here, uh, on council have been helpful throughout the year to give you a better understanding of what the fire bureau does day in and day out, uh, maybe more so than what you've had in years past. So, uh, just in the essence of time, uh, we just focused on those questions that you had. I did want to, uh, quickly, if I may, address the overtime reallocations brought up last night. I know I wasn't here, uh, for that, but the, uh, I believe there's some questions about why and you know, how, how do we get to the point we were? Uh, so just a couple of things, uh, led to that, a, a couple of one, I'm, I'm talking a bunch. Uh, one of the things that we've started to do, and you'll see that as one of the, uh, the, the strengths that we've had this past years, we started to better document our, uh, injuries and IOD status. And thanks to Deputy Chief Statizan, he takes care of this, uh, nearly on a daily basis. So with the 22, approximately 2,200 hours of lost time injury accidents last year, a lot of those, the majority of them, uh, over 50% were COVID related. So under, uh, Pennsylvania state law currently, um, uh, through the COVID pandemic, uh, any, any firefighter or police officer is diagnosed with COVID is considered injured on duty, no matter where they contracted it from. So that has continued to plague our department as it has every other department. Uh, and is the biggest IOD claim that we've had to date. Uh, we also have, uh, one firefighter that's been off, uh, over a year working light duty because of a back injury, uh, and, and neck injury. He just had, uh, surgery for that, uh, two Mondays ago, I believe it was. Uh, currently we have three of our firefighters of our complement that are deployed on long-term military leave. Uh, in other words, they're going for more than a year at a time. So those firefighters, we have to now backfill for on the street while they're out protecting the country uh, on their military deployments. We have, uh, three additional military members that, uh, use their allotted 15 days from the federal government for their reserve activities as well. So that's another 45 days plus that we have to backfill, um, those folks. We had a total of six firefighters through the year, um, that were on light duty of some sort that were a result of an injury that happened outside of work. So they got injured outside of work, um, sick, whatever it was. They had to, um, they came back to work light duty and worked in the office. So while they were all sick and then while they were on light duty, we had to fill that position in the street. We have nine members, uh, currently in the Bureau that have an FMLA claim, a family medical leave claim, um, that is, uh, in, in various states of, you know, whether it's a newborn baby, taking care of a loved one that is going through a, a health crisis. So we have nine, uh, firefighters that have been utilizing the FMLA through 2022. And then the big one, uh, was the Pennsylvania Task Force One deployment to, uh, assist with Hurricane Ian. Uh, as a member of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's response, uh, to that devastating hurricane. Uh, that number, interestingly enough, uh, in the overtime budget, just from a single two week period while they were deployed, uh, was $130,000. So 130,000 of that overtime. Uh, and it's probably going to be a little bit more. We, we don't have the, the paperwork, the reimbursement filled out for that yet, but approximately 130,000. So you know, obviously almost a quarter of what we spent, uh, was just that one deployment for that backfill plus the payment. And remember when those guys are deployed to PIMA or to FEMA, uh, as a federal agency employee, they're paid 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Um, so when they leave, they get their base 42 hour salary at 1.0. Every other hour is at 1.5. So, uh, it, it's a significant, uh, overtime that is all though reimbursed back to the city. Once we submit that reimbursement to Philadelphia, uh, for that reimbursement. We do have one outstanding reimbursement. We're working through some legalities on it to get back, uh, and that's about 160,000, I believe. So, uh, a lot of that will be recouped. Uh, and then additionally, uh, like I said, the, the military deployments, um, while those guys are out protecting our country, we have to backfill for them here at home. Was there any, any other questions that went at reallocation? I just wanted to clear that up. All right. Uh, so the first set of questions that we received. I forget which I got first here. I think it was easy. Uh, what are your department's goals for the upcoming year and what have some of your compliment accomplishments been for, uh, 2022? Our goals for 2023 to continue to provide the best fire and rescue services in the capital region. Expand our daily working relationship with the Bureau of Codes to identify and document derelict buildings for demolition. Work to conduct more joint inspections by incorporating on-duty firefighters and the fire inspector to target problem property types. I.e. unlicensed assembly occupancies, garages and boarding houses. And update both the building and fire codes to the current versions, uh, to better work together. Build a more robust training plan for the members of the Bureau of Fire, which we're able to do through the promotion of Deputy Chief Wise, uh, to the Deputy Chief of Training. Institute a modernized scheduling software platform. Continue to build relationships regionally, both with our mutual aid partners and through the South Central Counterterrorism Task Force. And continue to monitor and update emergency management capabilities to ensure preparedness for large planned events, natural and man-made disasters. And ensure that the Bureau is capable of meeting or exceeding all of our residents' expectations. Accomplishments, I think the biggest one, uh, is that to date, uh, we have not had a single fire fatality in the city of Harrisburg in 2022. This is due in part by the quick response times of the apparatus that is staffed with highly trained and skilled personnel, coupled with the aggressive installation of smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms free for the residents throughout the city. Many adaptive reuse properties, uh, in addition to that, many adaptive reuse properties and new housing construction, uh, projects are required to be outfitted with automatic fire sprinkler systems. Which we see, uh, fires annually, uh, that are, that are extinguished before we get there, uh, by that fire sprinkler system. Uh, we've added five new members to the Bureau, bringing our total complement to 93. Promoted Battalion Chief Wise to the Deputy Chief of Training, which will assist, as I said, in that. Promoted Battalion Chief Wise to the Deputy Chief of Training, which will assist, as I said, in that training, more robust training. And with our ultimate goal of looking at what our I S O rating is and trying to get a better fire insurance rate for our citizens and property owners. We participated in many community events throughout the year. We continued our free smoke alarm and carbon monoxide alarm installations and participated with a one, with one neighborhood canvassing event in conjunction with the American Red Cross. We began a better collaboration with Codes, Police and Zoning to collectively enforce code and blight issues that plague our residents. We began tracking injuries and work-related illnesses with greater detail to try and identify root causes. We continue to rebuild our regional technical rescue team in collaborations with the cities of York, Lancaster, the Township of Mannheim and the Defense Logistics Agency, Susquehanna, through the South Central Counterterrorism Task Force. And proudly, members participated in Pennsylvania Task Force One and deployed to, as a federal asset in the wake of Hurricane Ian. Any questions on that rapid fire? Response. Do you have any vacancies? Currently, there are two vacancies that was due to a retirement and one due to a candidate withdrawing his job offer prior to going to the Hack Fire Academy. And the last set of questions, what is the Bureau's diversity complement? That, as in years past, always comes from H R. We have no data technicians or anybody that tracks for us in the Bureau. That has to come based upon what the applications are. All the applications for the Bureau of Fire are submitted to the H R department for tracking. Or current, or any current employees in the Bureau bilingual, we have several members that are bilingual, but again, it's something that we don't track. And if it's put on the job application, we don't, that would have to come through that H R tracking. And when do you intend to fill the four firefighter trainee positions, what quarter of 2023? And are they external candidates? They will begin the Spring Fire Academy at Hack during the first quarter of 2023. And all new firefighter trainees are external candidates that complete civil service testing and qualification requirements. That is all the questions that was presented in writing.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for any questions. I'll start to my far left with our Public Safety Chair, Councilman Rodriguez.
No questions for me, just more of a statement. Appreciate you gentlemen joining us this evening and keep up the great work. And I've enjoyed having some fun with your team during the holidays, especially during Halloween, giving out the candy. And just seeing the great costumes walking up with smiles on their face. So appreciate you gentlemen. Keep it up.
Thank you for being a part of that. That has been a huge benefit for both city residents and our members of bringing the public back into our fire stations and opening our doors up in a welcoming way. So we appreciate that.
Councilman Daniels.
I'm not sure if this is for you or for Codes, but regarding the fire escrow funds that we get, how much did we get for this year? Do you know or?
That's actually a treasury question.
Okay.
That should go to Cecilia in Treasury. I will tell you that through a conversation with Neil, Cecilia and myself, we have implemented a new process for the fire escrow funds and incorporated the Fire Bureau actually into the fire escrow funds now. So we are better tracking that. We just, actually, the last two days, we've had emails back and forth about a fire that occurred in 2021 where they're asking for a fire report and there was no escrow given. So that insurance company has been put on notice that they need to provide the city with fire escrow for that particular property. There was another one that come in today and there was around $8,000 in back taxes as well as some utility bills. So that will be dealt with through that fire escrow. And it's now doing part because we're communicating back and forth between the three, between, actually, I guess, just between Treasury and myself. When we have a fire or when they receive one, and then that goes out to the different other bureaus for their input on any outstanding bills or liens.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
Yes, thank you, and thank you all for being here. First question with regard to the vacancies, mentioned that there were two vacancies, but the document in front of me says that there are seven.
Yeah, correct. There was, so when we looked at it, we promoted some driver operators that weren't accounted for. So they're shown twice. So we have seven vacancies.
Okay. Okay. That there. Yes, and then, excuse me. One question regarding the carbon monoxide detector program. How many are you, how many do you install on an annual basis? And how do residents, how are residents able to access that program? I think it's something that's fundamental in terms of increasing fire protection within the city.
Sure. So we installed both carbon monoxide and smoke alarms. We install them yearly weekly. We have set aside different nights. So residents can call into the Fire Chief's office and we schedule that on various days of the week that coincide with days we don't have training or things like that scheduled. And install them at night. We like to get those done at night instead of during the day, if possible. And the other way we install them is when we go out to a property for a call. Our members have to check that property before we leave to ensure that they have working smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors. To date, I cannot, unfortunately, with our record reporting system, I can tell you that we installed them, but I can't tell you how many we installed. So we could run a report and tell you that these are how many smoke detector installation details we've done. And that's been part of that quarterly report. But I can't, with the current records management system, tell you how many. There's no place to input the quantity.
And then in terms of, are all those, are they donated or is that a purchase that the city makes?
So yeah, they are a purchase. The, we are, we just bought more this year. It's the first time that we used our general fund budget, the last grouping of them, we bought through a grant money that we received.
Don't want to make any assumptions, but are the 10-year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. We will not. We, we actually had, it put us in a precarious situation. We had some folks that wanted to donate smoke alarms and they were battery operated. We just, we just will not install the nine-volt batteries anymore.
Yeah, no. At this time, no further questions. Thank you, Trevor. Thank you all for being here.
Did you, Councilman Majors, did you want, Deputy Chief Sazan has been working on the Tyler Technologies upgrade. I didn't know if you wanted to get his take on that as he's been our liaison with I T through that whole process.
Sure, yes.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no. Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. So I've been involved with Steve Bortner from the early stages of Tyler. Just like police, the scheduling version of Tyler is called as Executetime. And it's designed to handle the non-weekly schedules like police and fire do, where it's not just Monday to Friday. And because our department has practices that are so nuanced, it's an off-the-shelf solution just won't work. The basic issue that we had with Executetime was the way we call out to fill vacancies when we call out for overtime. It could not handle our current practice. And we don't believe that it's in our best interest to change our practice. So we've searched elsewhere and we actually had a demonstration from Planet Scheduling for us as well. But that wouldn't fit our bill either. Everything else that I have experienced with Tyler and the Munis system, I believe, is the right direction for the city. I believe it will be a great replacement to Metro.
And in terms of your exploration of other time-tracking software, all of it will communicate with Tyler Technologies if you, have you selected a new system yet?
We have, yes.
Okay.
And it's, I, it's a fire-based records management system. And everything that I have, every question that I've asked of the Tyler representatives was basically our issue is payroll and payroll is a simple export that it's a CSV file that gets sent, sent to Munis.
Okay.
So everything that we need to communicate, it will.
Okay.
And I think from, from our standpoint, as we continue to broaden our relationship and our inner working abilities with Codes, the Tyler Technology system is going to break down those silos that we currently live in. And it's going to, it's going to make information sharing amongst public safety, even though we're not using it for our scheduling. That breakdown of those walls for public safety, sharing of information, problem properties, codes violations, all that stuff. It's going to make that seamless and we're going to be able to more collaboratively work together on those problem properties.
Okay. And then, yes. As I have a little bit more time since you brought that up. Aside from that, another question I had regarding updating our codes. Guess what's that process look like for you guys to update to a higher standard for some of the codes internally? Because I know there are other things happen at the state level, but at the city level, what can we do to ensure that we can update our codes to the the highest level we can outside of what has happened at the state level?
Right. So we just need to go back through and look at the fire code. And quite frankly, we need to look at the building code because we don't have the current statewide building code adopted. That needs to come down to council through a resolution, which will hopefully work through the Law Bureau you know, this year and by the second half of '23 have something, and we don't want to pile too much on the Neil. But you know, I did offer my assistance, legal assistance, but he hasn't taken it yet.
Brian will give a legal opinion of anything.
But our goal is by the second half of next year, to get something down to you folks here at council to be able to update that code. And we have to protect what we currently have in our fire code because it's more stringent than what the international fire code that's adopted is. And we have to, we have to be very cautious to protect that language so that we don't lose it.
Yeah, no, agreed. I may have one additional question, but thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. Council President Bowers.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Good evening. I'm glad to hear that you found the quarterly reporting to be helpful in sharing and in preparation for these budget hearings. That was one of the goals that we set forth when implementing them. So I'm glad to hear that. I just wanted, if you could elaborate on one of your accomplishments that you noted, I think you talked about it a little bit. But just the collaboration with Codes, Police and Zoning on the effective or collective enforcement of codes and blight issues.
Sure. Our, our orders from the mayor have been to make the city a better place to live and work. And I believe that over the years, we have neglected to collectively work together. Anne Montgomery has been a phenomenal leader in Codes and has done a phenomenal job. We have collectively looked at outside-the-box thinking of how we target some of the slum lords that we deal with and those problem properties that are habitual offenders and the the blight that our neighborhoods have. And so one of the ways that we've done that, and I'll give you, I'll give you two examples. Just recently, we had a property that was operating illegally, did not have a business license to operate. They were holding parties in the building, collecting a door fee to get in, making thousands of dollars per night, wreaking havoc on the neighborhood, leading up to shots being fired on a downtown street. And we put, collaboratively got together and met, so we've got to do something. What do we do? So through Codes, they condemned the building because it was an illegal occupancy. There's, there's a provision in the code, you can condemn it for that. Once it was condemned, the Fire Bureau came in because on a condemned property, I can have the water shut off, I can have the sewer shut off. And I can have the electric pulled. So we pulled the electric meter, which shut them down. And unfortunately, every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. The following night when they reopened, they brought a gas power generator into the first floor of the building and almost killed six people on the third floor of the apartment building. Obviously, we took care of that. But those are the things we're dealing with. That property is now back in the hands of the landlord who was, quite frankly, afraid of the tenants that he had in there. So we were able to bring, that's, that's just one of quite a few that we've dealt with this year, one instance. One other thing that we've been dealing with, and we talk about blight, you know, burnout buildings and buildings that have fallen down that are derelict with these slum lords that buy them, whether they're on the taxi or the repository list, however they get them. We have a couple of properties, and I'm being very vague because I don't want to, I don't, and I know I don't, I don't want to call the landlords out. We have two properties burnt out in the Uptown and right across the street from Station One. And we had a, I got, I was at Station One for a, another matter and a demolition contractor come in and said, hey, can we meet with you down on Kelker Street? We have two properties that we're looking to tear down. I said, yeah. And we believe you need to throw this lady out of her house because it's unsafe. That led into these fire-ridden properties. And the comment to me was, well, I'm not going to tear that down because the city will tear it down. And they'll lean my property, but the property is only going to be worth $5,000 because it's only going to be a lot when it's done. So why would I spend $40,000 to tear it down, have a $5,000 lot when the city will tear it down? And I'm just losing $5,000 on my lot that I'm going to give up. So that is, that is the, the down and dirty of what we're seeing out there. So we are now looking at trying to better condemn these buildings and get them in the court to start a legal process that will end up on the criminal side. We're also have a meeting scheduled with CID, City CID through Captain Whelan, the District Attorney and Judge Cherry to discuss how we can bring criminal charges against some of these properties that are a danger to the residents living next to them. And, and the property that I use is one that I just mentioned on Kelker Street. That is a perfect example of, this woman has lived in her property for 60 years. She's done absolutely nothing wrong. She has two derelict buildings because there's an absentee slum lord that owns the two next door. And they want us to evict her because they don't want to pay to tear anything down. They, they, they don't want the liability when their building falls down on hers. So those are the things that we're trying to now more collectively, collaboratively work through, through zoning, through police, through Codes and through fire to ensure that we're doing the best job we can. Understanding that when we go to court, and I know that the the McClay Street apartments have been in the news more than anybody wants to see. Absolutely horrendous landlord at that property. But the problem is when we take them to court, those first couple of times, they're only getting fines and the court can't make them fix them. And I don't believe that the public understands that. So the court, the Magisterial District Judge can't make them fix anything. The only thing you do is give them a fine. So we got to figure out how we elevate that to a criminal element that you're wrecking the city. And how do we get that to a criminal element that we can start to hold their feet to the fire and, and take our city back from, from the slum lords that destroyed it?
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry to hear that a landlord is afraid of tenants. I'm on the converse. I guess I'm glad to hear the collaborative effort. I think that the vacant property reinvestment board, the city's other tool for blight remediation. If that is functional, once again, I think that could help with some of this too. But I definitely think stronger penalties need to be in place here because, as you said, the woman that's been in her home for 60 years, it's no fault of hers that the property or two properties beside her that may be leaning in one direction. If we have a bad winter or a really hot summer, there's no assistance for her. I think that's unfortunate, but I am glad to hear about the collaboration. I think, as you said, from my observance. as you said, from my observation, many of the bureaus have worked in silos for so long, so it is nice to see everybody working together really for the same common goal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mattson, any questions?
Yes, thank you for coming out this evening. And my question's similar to what I asked the police in terms of homegrown candidates. Do you have a process in place? If you do, what does that look like? Are we outreach into kids in schools or having conversations about firefighter?
So, that is one thing that we had been working with police on and have had several meetings with school administration. The, the ultimate goal would be to have exactly what Deputy Chief Sorensen talked about is a collaborative police-fire EMS. It can't be singular. We have to expose to all three emergency services disciplines, which all three are struggling to get, number one, quality candidates, and number two, candidates from our local area. That, that is, when you look at EMS, you know, I'm proud of what Life Team has done. They, they started a EMS Academy for EMT, where you're hired through UPMC as a civilian, you go through the EMT process while being paid, and then you come on as a Life Team, Community Life Team EMS employee and/or UPMC Community Life Team employee that then serves the city of Harrisburg and a hundred and two other municipalities. But that has been successful. So, we're, we're looking at, at what that looks like in collaboration with Hack to get a program put into the school to be able to accomplish those goals. We're a little different. Ours is nineteen to be a firefighter. So, we can catch them out of school. The one frustrating thing for us has been we've hand delivered, literally, when I say hand delivered, hand delivered, applications to candidates. And they, they just don't wanna turn them back in. And that, that's been frustrating on our side. So, we're excited to see what this next round of testing coming up this summer brings and how we can better utilize it. And we've purposely put the testing after graduation so that they, because one of the requirements for civil services, they have a high school diploma. So, or GED. So, that, that puts us in a better place to get those high school candidates right out of high school.
Okay, very good. That was all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rouse.
Thank you, and good evening to you all. Thank you for coming. I just had a few questions. The first one was, I know that you had mentioned, I think, HR would have the numbers for the diversity complement and the bilingual complement. Is there any way you're able to get those numbers from HR to?
Yes, I, I believe that they were in the process of pulling those. And, and there's more, the, the, and because we don't have anybody that specializes in that, in Fire Bureau, we can't just look at somebody and say, yeah, we believe you're a minority or not. We gotta look at the application. We don't keep those on the board.
Right, no, that's respectful. You can assume. So, no, thank you if it's coming.
More work for Joni, unfortunately.
Right. Do you have? Oh, so for the technology review, I guess, was there like a committee for that? And like, did you have a member on there so people were able to say, hey, this isn't working for us and?
When you say technology, for your Tyler Technology?
Yes. Was there someone on a committee that was able to, you know, speak and say, hey, this Tyler Technology doesn't work for us? I'm just wondering where the communication?
So, when the first meetings happened, the only solution for police and fire on the Tyler Technology side is the Executive Time Suite. So, if, even for payroll purposes, the Executive Time Suite had to be purchased so that it could handle our work schedules on the payroll side and reflect the correct pay. And through more meetings, at least on the Fire Bureau side, we started to kind of the realization that our processes couldn't be satisfied by them. So, that was basically the way it worked.
Okay, I wish it was one program that worked for all of us, but you know, every, you know, one shoe doesn't always fit. So, you know, I hope it just all works out where each department is able to get what they need, but the tire technology does overwhelmingly help more of our department, even though I know we're firing police right now.
I believe it will.
Yeah, we believe it will. And I think the other thing you have to, you know, when you, when we look at, at an RMS system, even police and fire from a reporting standpoint, our reporting records management systems are different because we have different, there's different things that we do in a report where police have different elements to their criminal report, to their traffic stop report, to their community complaint report. And our reports, so whether we're going out on a carbon monoxide alarm, a automatic fire alarm, a building fire, has a different set of requirements based upon personnel and apparatus and things like that. So, even, even that, there's not one combined anywhere that you can buy that would take care of both police and fire from a records management standpoint, just an incident. So, we were very fortunate while Metro worked and, and how that was created, it just, it, it unfortunately doesn't talk to any other system. That's the problem.
Okay, thank you. And my last question was, you, you kind of touched on it with Councilman Mattson about the EMS fire and police like programming that you're trying to get into the schools. I know it's not an easy task. Where exactly are you on that status? Like, are you kinda just doing the planning parts? Are we almost done with planning and getting? What's the?
I would say that we are very early in the planning process. And when you look at a, being an educator, you understand it. We can't just show up and say, here's what we're gonna teach you, right? So, that's been, that's been a struggle because then us guys, you know, cut hole squirt water types, can't draw up and write that curriculum. So, then we have to look for something that we can do. And that, that's where the hack piece comes in. Because they've successfully executed that in York City to a very small extent. Now, unfortunately, York City, as I understand, their, their enrollment in that process and that system has dwindled year after year. So, I, I'm not sure, and I don't know a whole lot about where they started and, and what that looks like going forward, why they've seen that dwindling. But we wanna make sure that whatever we do is sustainable in the future going forward. And, you know, I think the early stages of what we do is just that interaction the best that we can. And, and that's, we had talked earlier this year with linking up with ROTC, which is a, a great group of of students out there to interact with that have, you wanna go into military or some kind of public safety. I talked to some of them here at the holiday parade and I, I think of the six or eight that I talked to, two of them wanted to be firefighters. And, and I think it was only because I kinda coerced it out of them that they wanted to be firefighters, right? So, they all wanted to go into military engineering and construction, which are all great, you know, avenues. And, and you know, we encourage that. It just, we also wanna encourage some to come to us as well.
Right, I get that. No, and I applaud you for like, for seeing that need. All the departments EMS, police, fire for seeing that need that we wanna encourage them to come. And it's just the exposure. And it's not an easy task, like you said. So, you know, as much as we can get them exposed and they'll know it, because I think if you ask like ten kids right now, there are eight of them are gonna say, I can be a YouTuber. And they'll say that because that's what they see so much, right? It's that exposure. So, I think if we just, you know, keep trying to expose it to them, we're gonna show them, hey, look at all these other things you can do. And a firefighter is one. So, and I'm happy to help too with the curriculum part. If, if you need me on a committee or anything, I'm more than that excites me to do that type of stuff. So, I'm here to help.
Excellent. Councilwoman Ross, I just wanted to remind, part of the initiative that Chief and Commissioner were speaking about was in earlier this year when we had several meetings with the school district in regards to the junior police, junior safety. It was the Safety Academy that we had written up. So, any help from council would be great. So, we can push it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
The Junior Public Safety.
Public Safety Academy.
There we go.
All right, anyone else? Any other questions or comments for the fire?
Yeah, I guess, well, one question person, there may be a follow up. Looking at, appreciate your explanation earlier regarding overtime, which was extremely helpful, but looking at, excuse me, the proposed budget, also we're proposing a decrease in overtime, knowing that the last few years, the overtime budget has almost doubled what we budgeted. And I, I understand that there are reimbursements that are included. But again, are we? I mean, is there a way to try to more accurately reflect what our, our true overtime is in terms of how we budget? Because again, we're budgeting, proposing four hundred thousand. Last year's budget was four hundred and seventy-five thousand. But if you look at what was actually spent in overtime in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we're almost doubling that. So.
Sure. So, we believe, number one, the last three years, we were inundated with COVID. That, that was a significant burden. And the other thing, so, so to coincide with that, with the seven new hires, that's gonna cut down on our overtime. I, I'll give you an example. Last week's overtime, the, the average now is around nineteen thousand dollars every two weeks. And as I told you, when we deployed with FEMA, it was a hundred and thirty thousand. Through the summer, because of vacations and things, it goes up, we were around forty thousand every two weeks, forty to fifty thousand every two weeks for overtime. That all being said, I believe if we were to budget, so the, the majority of that, that overtime comes from those FEMA deployments. And I, I think it would be, I think it would be reckless for us to budget for that in anticipation of that and then not need it when that money could be spent elsewhere. Because it, it, we, we don't, we don't have anywhere for that revenue to come from, other than from the FEMA reimbursement. And so, to artificially, I, I think we'd artificially inflate the budget for a possibility. And, and this year, we only had one deployment, right? So, last year, we had, when you look at COVID, the COVID deployment to Philadelphia, the, we did the Surfside, we also did the Republican National, was it Republican or Democratic National? So, we had four deployments last year in excess of a hundred thousand each. So, to narrow that down and say, here's what we think it'll be, I think would be, from a budgeting standpoint, would be reckless and irresponsible.
So, you think it's, you're, you're comfortable budgeting less than you did last year? I mean, I'm even just thinking, not, not trying to get to the numbers that you had in twenty twenty, twenty-one, but just even budgeting for four seventy-five, because we did just get a, a request, understanding a lot of that was due to deployments, but there are other pieces that cover that. So.
Now, am I gonna lie to you? Do I think we'll be coming back in September or in October for a reallocation? I'm gonna tell you, we probably will, but it, it will be because of a reallocation for to increase expenditures, but also increase that revenue, because we're gonna know what that reimbursement is if, if we're deployed on, on some kind of a natural or manmade disaster.
Okay.
And, and I think from a budgeting standpoint, and talking about, and Brian does a great job up in, in the Budget Office, trying to keep things together. And, and we've worked well together the last nine years that I've been down here. It, it, it seems that we need to budget for what the city needs currently. When we look at that FEMA deployment and those extra, so even through South Central, we're getting some reimbursements back. And then just come down and say, hey, here's what the reimbursement was. We spent a hundred and nineteen thousand, increase the expenses by a hundred and nineteen thousand on overtime, but also then, on, on the same token, increase the revenue by a hundred and nineteen thousand on FEMA USAR contract income line. And, and it offsets that. So, there's no cost, perceived cost to the city then. And I think that's an open and fair, honest way to do that. I know it's, it's a hassle coming down for those reallocations, but I think it gives the citizens a better view. Because if you remember, not that long ago, twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, we were nearing four million dollars in overtime, three and a half million dollars in overtime. And, and, and that was obviously because of our lack of staffing. And I think this gives the citizens a greater transparency of where that money's being spent when we do that reallocation based on those FEMA USAR response, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that does. In terms of your overall compliment, are you comfortable with where you are and what would be an ideal compliment of officers for the city?
I believe that we can definitely accomplish our mission and goals effectively and efficiently with the current budget. Looking forward, five years, I, I, we need to look at other options on growing and, and other station placements so that we can increase that as the outside response decreases, that we're able to, to handle our own business inside with a bigger compliment.
Okay. And I'll just speak in general, I think you had brought this up before when we were looking at some of the mutual aid agreements and potentially, you know, covering a larger territory and looking at different ways to provide fire coverage in our region. Are you still having conversations with surrounding municipalities and how's that going? I know just from trying to be mindful of my current employment. I just, I just, just understanding the realities of the fire service in the Commonwealth. I just wanna, like, what, how are those conversations going with those surrounding municipalities? And how are we best gonna be able to for proper coverage throughout the city of Harrisburg?
They're in my current capacity. I don't have to worry about what I say about the surrounding municipalities.
Please, please. Yeah, please be mindful, please be mindful.
But the globally, volunteerism is dead. And we need, and, and we see it. We are responding out of the city nearly daily to assist our mutual aid partners. Now, in, in fairness, in one hundred percent openness and fairness, they're responding back to us as well. Now, with more transparency, I will tell you that earlier this year, the, the three of us, Chief Souter, Sadazan and myself, we went around and met with local volunteer fire chiefs, twenty twenty-eight different volunteer fire companies, to increase the number of volunteer fire departments that we request mutual aid from, because they can't put as many firefighters on a fire truck to come help us. So, we essentially doubled the amount of fire apparatus that comes to the city so that we have enough of firefighters coming in when we have a major event happening in the city. So, that being said, we, we have looked, we had a contract, a negotiation with Paxton Borough that unfortunately, they picked volunteers over career staff. I'm not sure how you do that in twenty twenty-two with all the statistics out there, response times and everything else, but that was their municipal choice and their community will live with that decision. When we look at other regional opportunities, the biggest thing is the cost. They're currently not paying anything for fire service. So, anything that deals in, in, you as council members understand that you don't wanna raise taxes. And any career fire service in any municipality, regionally, is gonna require an additional tax revenue source to pay for that. So, that is always gonna be where we're gonna deadlock, is, is that cost. And I think that we have to look at that constructively and determine what that means for us with some of our contiguous municipalities, where we may be able to utilize their fire station as a tertiary fire station for us. And maybe there's a trade off on the actual cost of personnel. And those are some of the outside the box thinking that we have to look at. So, we may take a loss on it, but it may be a benefit back to the city in, in, in return. So, it, it's a, it, it is a difficult proposition. And, you know, another local municipality had anticipated, they budgeted hiring part-time firefighters. And that, for political reasons, was also cut from their budget. And they were told they couldn't hire them, that the volunteers will handle it. And they continued to falter. And so, as we look at that, unfortunately, in emergency services, the, the police get the lion's share of the budget in the surrounding municipalities, as here, and it's just the nature of the beast. And it is tough for Uh, and it is tough for other municipalities to compete. Uh, and think that they can work with the city, and I think that we still have a, if if I'm being frank, as I as I always am with you folks. Uh, I think if we're being frank, the the city, we still have not recovered from the external stigma. Of the city of Harrisburg, uh, and that's frustrating to us, uh, as as employees, it's frustrating to my firefighters. Uh, we know we do one heck of a job, uh, but it is still seen that it's tied to the city. And the city, regionally, um, at the municipal level, they still look down on us. Uh, and and that's, uh, that's a travesty in and of itself, um, and as we repair that. As we repair that, I think that will help build those relationships, and I think that the trash contracts were the first in for that. Uh, to show that we can, that that we're not some faltering municipality anymore, uh. But that that's always gonna be an uphill battle for us, uh, and and it it happens a- across the state, when you look at at those trying to. To regionalize, uh, it comes down to that almighty dollar, and I I believe that the way to get around that is a, um, is an authority. Uh, however, under the authority model, uh, the the firefighters would lose their Act One Eleven collective bargaining rights. So at the state level, we would need to, uh, lobby to get that Act One Eleven collective bargaining. Agreed upon for any authority firefighter, which would then, and and that has overarching, uh, response. Because that takes care of all the airports in Pennsylvania, so there's there's a whole bunch of repercussions to that. But I think that authority model equally spreads, uh, the 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 cost out, uh, amongst the the residents. As opposed to a tax levy to try and figure out what's equitable to everybody.
Okay, alright, thank you.
That was a long response, but I it it's something that that just, we we have in Pennsylvania, um. Sat on the sidelines and have done absolutely nothing for emergency services collectively. Uh, to make it better for every resident, and the residents, uh, that that are being protected with those subpar services. Don't understand it, because a red fire truck shows up, uh, and and they don't understand the the repercussions behind that.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Green.
Thank you. Anyone else with any comments or questions for the Bureau of Fire? Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight, thank you for answering our questions and indulging us, um, and, uh. I think we were, only thing we we needed from you guys was the diversity compliment and the language compliment from that you're waiting for from HR.
Yep, correct, and we look forward to hopefully in, uh, February, uh, once things settle down. To give you a year-end report on, uh, call statistics and things like that, uh, uh, just we've done the quarterly reports.
Alright, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I believe next we have the Bureau of Codes that will, uh, wrap us up for the night. Good evening, and thank you for being here tonight. Uh, if you could start us off, um, with any presentation you have, including an overview, and then if you could answer the questions, um. That were previously asked before the meeting, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, City Council. Is the mic on? Be able to hear me?
I think you just need to move a little closer to it.
That's good. Uh, so I have the, uh, projects that are happening in the city of Harrisburg. Sycamore Street, new apartments are gonna go in there, twenty-four units, it's low-income housing, first floor will be community room and an office. Sixth and Her, uh, new building also going in, it'll be a forty-eight unit apartment for the elderly. Rehab of the high-rise Linden Terrace, which is located at twelve oh one North Front, this is also low-income housing. That is getting a complete rehab. The H U, uh, Harrisburg University at Third and Chestnut is, will be completed by the end of this year. On Swatara Street and near the uptown YMCA, new housing is being built, uh, seven. Seven housing, seven buildings altogether. Fifteen oh seven North Third, five units have been, uh. The building used to be a commercial, so it was a change of use. They, uh, turned that into five units, and the first floor is commercial, I believe it's bakery there, it's right by the Vietnamese restaurant. Also, twenty-five North Front, uh, change of use from offices to a five-unit apartment building with. One commercial on the first floor, also, the Walnut Street Library was just completed, this was an addition, and a rehab. Deputy Administrator has been inspecting all the commercial permits and has been, uh. Along with the projects and has been very busy with all the new projects and rehabs in the city. Uh, to give an overview of what the code officers do, uh. In the beginning of the day, we'll print out the re- the complaints that we receive from the public. We assign them to the code officer to inspect notices sent out to the owner, property manager. And given time for repairs, if not completed citations or possible extensions are given if asked for. If a rental is due, they may perform a rental to address the complaint and just. Do the rental of the whole building or apartment unit. To handle that complaint, if the rental has not been, uh, inspected in the last five years. There are code officers assigned to properties that will need progressive inspections. And the contractor will call the code officer and schedule that inspection. While following up on a complaint, if time allows, a code officer will do a block walk, which generates multiple. Complaints that the code officer enters into the system and then sends out notices to the owners or property managers. We continue to chase down or closing down illegal rooming houses throughout the city. Code officers will also do stop works, work that is being done without having building permits applied for. We are now in the heating season, and when we receive a heat complaint, the code officer will respond immediately. And try to have the heat back on for the tenants by, uh, respond, addressing that. Complaint to landlord or property manager. Code code officers also document and collect evidence of the violations, they find and present this in court when they have to testify. The administrative, now, this is about the administrative assistants at the front counter, they've been doing a great job. And that's a job that is, uh, constantly multitasking. They answer phones, assist the public when they come to the front counter, guiding them through the different applications, answering questions. If needed, finding a code officer for the person at the front counter. Making sure the applications are filled out properly, entering the permits into the system, entering all the rental permit. Uh, that are applied for, entering the permit fees, electrical licenses and plumbing licenses. Licenses into the system, they also are doing the flood zoning certs when people sell their properties. Processing invoices for payments. And then about covers the job duties. Would like me to read the?
Yes, if you could go over the questions that, um, that were asked beforehand and then just give your responses.
Uh, what is the Bureau Borough's, Bureau's diversity compliment? Um, I did call. HR and they gave me that, sixty-two point five percent is white male, which comes out to ten. Six point twenty-five percent black male, which is one person who is a part-timer. Six point twenty-five percent Asian male, which is one person. Twelve point five percent black female, which comes to two people, twelve point five percent white female, which comes to two people. Are any current employees in the department bilingual? No, there is none. Which is very much needed, and, uh, Dorison was talking about his, uh, phone. And and I'm gonna look into that also to help us at the front counter, uh, to communicate with people. That are, uh, Spanish-speaking. When do you intend to fill the new administrative data analyst role, and what quarter? Internal or external candidate? We hope to fill the position in the first quarter. We will first try to fill the pos- position internally, and, uh, if nobody applies for it. Then we would go externally. Please share a job description of the administrative data analyst. This job description is gathering and analyzing information from a variety of sources. Complaint forms received from the community, violations found by code officers. Reports of housing violations from the fire department and police department, also collecting database information. This position will study codes enforcement activities and functions to enhance the deployment and utilization of the code enforcement officers. Information will be used to document and track repeat offenders, respond quickly to the community. Support public safety and supplying data to the city administrators and city council. Identifying properties that have not registered and paid the yearly rental fees. Generate data of condemned buildings with a grading system, the grading system is from one through five, one being the worst. Where it's usually, uh, collapsing, uh, and then having this data applied to a map showing the. Different grades throughout the city and and where they're located. Supervise and maintain consistent support of the administrative assistants, support the administrator and deputy administrator when needed. Goals for twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are looking to adopt the twenty eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. Currently, we're using the two thousand International Property Maintenance Code. Instance, we're asking for instant citations for illegally parked vehicles, motorcycles, boats and trailers that are located on the parcels. Like to fill the job vacancies for, in the code department, uh, one currently would be a code officer. And the second one, uh, administrator assistant, number one. Laptops for the code inspectors to utilize, one in the field, once we get connected to the Tyson. Software, right now, or the laptops would not be useful with the software that we use, uh, the D-Sit system. Electronic storage of plans, applications and documents, prepare forms and applications for the new Tyler system. Accomplishments in twenty twenty-two, working close with other departments. Which is the fire department, police department, planning zoning, and also mercantile. To shut down illegal after-hour clubs. More detailed information given to permit holders to know when to call for progressive inspections. And which code officer to call for the inspection. Working with IT and upgrading the city website to more easily find applications, forms for the public. Increase staff meetings and discussions on proper procedures. Develop training manuals for code officers. Radio upgrades are scheduled to be completed for the end of twenty twenty-two. Radios we're receiving from, uh, the police department that are leftovers of what they were using. And, um, or 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 have to pay for the main base that will be in the office. For when the code officers call in, and I believe we have to also put in an antenna. Continue working with Melissa from Communications and updating forms and applications. I don't believe I went through all the questions, because I jumped to the job description.
Yes, I do believe you missed, missed a couple, I believe you.
Okay. Okay. When do you intend to fill the administrative assistant one vacancy, what quarter of twenty twenty-three, internal or external? The vacancy for administrative one, uh, we are actively looking to fill. We have been doing interviews and doing background checks, some candidates have declined the job offer. So we're still looking to fulfill that. Please share a job description for the administrative assistant one, I did put an attachment in.
I don't believe we received the attachment, so if you could, uh, send that to the clerk and then, uh, the administrative assistant position.
Okay, I'll do that.
Is it administrative assistant one or two?
It it'll be administrative assistant one.
Okay.
When do you intend to fill the commercial code official vacancy? That was just recently filled within the last two weeks, so, which now, uh, it was an internal. Position that took took the commercial code, uh, vacancy. And so now we have a code officer vacancy. Uh, earlier this year, laptops were requested for the, for use in field, has this request been granted? Um, I believe I might have touched base on that, the laptops are not compatible with the current D-Sit system. Wasn't sure last year when we would be connected with the Tyson, uh, software. But my understanding is, we'll be connected towards the end of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, I I'm going to open up to my colleagues for questions. Once again, since this is public safety, I will start all the way to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Green, um, thank you, Anne, for being here, Director Montgomery, it's always a pleasure, um. I have no, uh, actual questions at the current time, some may come up as it goes to the other colleagues, I just wanna. Show my appreciation for meeting with, um, the residents that always bring up pertinent issues and you're, um, really adamant on meeting with them, so. I appreciate the due diligence you've had thus far, um, from the public safety standpoint, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
Thank you, um. That's the first question in terms of your goals for the upcoming year with respect to up the adoption of the twenty eighteen. International Property Maintenance Code, is that another thing that needs to come down to the Law Bureau? Or what's the process for the adoption of the Property Maintenance Code update in it?
Actually, it is the Law Bureau.
Yeah, we're we're pretty deep in, um, Tiffany Ballack has that, uh, what we hoped was a simple update, it turned out it was amended fifty times. Uh, in the city ordinance, so pulling apart the parts that we want to keep in the maintenance code. And the parts that we want specifically for Harrisburg is just a detail-oriented process, but she's pretty far into that, so.
Alright.
That that should be here for first quarter.
Okay, first quarter twenty twenty-three, okay, thank you, um. So, I guess, next question, uh, you mentioned about the goals for the instant citations. What does that process look like? How 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 would you go about, um, ensuring you're doing the instant citations? Is that new software, is that, um? What do you need to do to be able to meet that goal of the instant citations?
I think that's also something that Neil is working on.
It's also a code amendment, so that's what it is, right now, I believe what you're doing is you're treating it the same as if you found a. A a violation on the outside of a building, you're handing them a notice first and give them a chance to fix it, as opposed to what we do for tall grass.
Right now.
Right. So we're trying to switch it over to something closer. We would do it like with the tall grass. Where we see it, the code officer can cite it right away.
It's just that it's so blatant. But, you know, people are parking on their front lawn and driving over the sidewalks, over the curbs, and then parking on the front lawn.
So that that will come as part of that.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you. Um, in terms of your budget. There's not a huge deviation. I see some of the increases look like they're, um, just due to standard bargaining unit and salary increases. Oh, no further questions for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. President Bowers.
Um, thank you, Vice President Green. Good evening. I just have a few questions. Um, some related to your goals and then, um, just two others. So the first is related to the laptops that you mentioned, uh, for utilization when in the field. In reference to other technology that, um, maybe other municipalities are utilizing. I think there's like a handheld device that can be used by code officers. Are you aware of that technology that might be easier to, um, address citations? Or something that an, uh, officer would need it immediately?
Not aware of the handheld machines and how that works.
Okay.
Um, when the code officers go out, they're write out a report. And then that report is given to the manager, you know, like this is for rental or inspections. Um, and and that report is given to the manager or owner of the property. Um, and then also it's entered into the system and documented. So with the laptops, they would be able to come and, uh, enter the information as they move along possibly, or go right to their car once they're completed. Write up the, uh, the the violations and email that out to the, uh, landlord, property manager. Also, with the laptops, they'll be able to look in to the Tyson system to see who the owner is. If they come across a property that needs addressed or. Whereas now they're calling in and the administrative assistants are then stopping what they're doing. Going to the computer, looking up the information that they need, and then, uh, relaying that back to them. And with even the communication that we have right now, it's just sometimes very difficult to hear the code officer. And trying to get the addresses, you know, and the numbers right, that it's clear. It's 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 a lot of extra work.
I understand, so that could result in a time delay. Whereas if they have the laptops with all of the updated technology, it's more real-time information and interaction.
Yes, and we're not interrupting the administrative assistants. When they're currently maybe helping, uh, someone at the front counter. Or, you know, they have to stop what they're doing and then go back to that.
Right.
Lot of disturbing.
Understood. Electronic storage of plans, applications, and documents. Will all of this come with, uh, the new Tyler system? Or is this the electronic storage, um, somewhere else currently?
I believe it's gonna be somewhere else. It won't be part of the Tyson. It's something that we have to look into.
Okay.
As far as how to even do that legally. What all we can scan, you know, with the plans, they're very large. And and so do you need a special scanner for that? Someone also told me Harrisburg University, they may have something where students would do that at a at a low cost. Um, so there's things that we have to look into, but it is needed.
It's definitely needed. I'm glad to hear that it's even a thought or a possibility that's being explored. Uh, so a follow-up with that. With this electronic information, and maybe it's a question for Sylissa Grover. Would this be something that the public could access or submit forms electronically?
It it will depend a whole lot. There are restrictions under the right-to-know law and others on certain facilities. Having, uh, information that is sensitive online, including utility information about a facility. Uh, and and it just, so there isn't a blanket answer.
Understood.
So, uh, and there is a lot of records filed with the county already that are the large format that we access at other offices in the city. Um, so there is software out there to do it, but I don't know, we we will have to sort out what is accessible.
Okay, thank you.
I know the plans themselves would never be allowed to be eaten by the public, because that is ownership of the architect or agent.
Okay. My other questions are related to, uh, ProChamps. The, uh, agreement with the city for vacant property and foreclosed properties. Um, I was just curious if you're aware of how we are cataloging, uh, foreclosed properties.
That's not something that we're tracking. I I know ProChampions, we get a check from them, uh, a few times throughout the year for vacant properties that they are. I I so I have a, uh, connection that somebody sent me an email from Champions. And I'm having not yet followed up on that, to communicate with that woman. And to find out how we can maybe, um, maybe do more with the ProChamps.
Think it would be helpful, particularly with the foreclosed properties. My next question is, I wondered if we, um, if perhaps the lack of cataloging or knowledge of the catalog was resulting in a lack of potential revenue.
Which that's possible. I mean, and and I think maybe even the data analyst could be part of, uh.
Yes, I wondered if that if that role, um, could assist perhaps.
I I believe it would be a big assist.
Okay.
But I'll look into into that.
Please, I think you might be pleasantly surprised by what you find. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, President Bowers. Councilman Majors.
Um, most of my questions are already asked, so I don't have any currently. I may have some later.
Thank you, and Councilman Rouse.
Thank you. Um, my question actually was just asked to with the ProChamp. So I'm being, I think we all would be interested to know what that data is and, you know. Um, thank you for writing that down to look into that. My only other question was, um, I know you mentioned that we don't have anyone in the office who's bilingual. I mean, any of the, any languages, you know, not just Spanish, but I know there's so many out there in our city currently. Do we have, and I don't know if maybe you know, um, Mr. Grover, um, Language Line? Do we have a contract with Language Line at all? Um, which is, you know, can be a quick way to try to communicate with someone on the phone.
Not that I'm aware of, but that phone, is that just for Spanish then, or is it?
No, that's just for typing it in and translating. From what I'm understanding, it's for translation. I know of Language Line.
Yeah, they're two different things. The the phone thing is.
Different thing, yes.
Um, Language Line is a service. We have used Language Line in different offices. I don't know that we have a con, I just don't remember if it's a contract, or whether it was just an as-needed, uh, uh, call-in. Um, when when it happens, but it's not been used nearly to the degree that it could be.
Right.
Um, the the lack of language access is a real issue, uh, of the present and the future. I mean, the language diversity in the city is changing pretty dramatically. Um, and, uh, it it is something that's gonna have to require attention, uh, and some knowledge base to 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 how to move forward.
Okay, are you able to look into it to see? Like if we do have access to Language Line and how much access, um, maybe Director Montgomery can have to it. Um, be until we can really get something settled out, because I think that would be a great.
Yeah, the contract question is driven by cost, right? So certain purchases on an active basis are so low that they don't go to a contract, they go to a purchase order.
Okay.
Um, and so I'm saying, I I just, I will see this a purchase order in place for Language Line. There may be, and it may be from a specific department. Uh, but, um, I I'm not sure if tax enforcement, for example, is using them or not, or Treasury. Um, but I, someone in the past had been accessing them. I just can't remember which department it was.
Yeah, it'd be great if we could, you know, just figure out, just so we know where you can go from there. Like, is that something we need to, well, it is something we need to look into, but like what other avenues other than Language Line are there? I don't know of any, but.
Well, the obvious one is offering training to employees in languages.
Well, that too.
That is that.
It is hard to pick up sometimes as you get older.
I have no aptitude myself, so.
But it, but it, we should, we definitely should be definitely learning different languages. We're in a diverse, I agree with that. That was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thing none? Thank you.
I do have the.
I was gonna say, um, but also our our health officer, Ms. Nova Wright, is here. Um, and would like to give us a little information about what's going on, uh, with, uh, our health office and things going on around the city. So please, uh, join us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh, so much for allowing me to address you today. Um, I didn't have any formal questions, but I did want to just kind of give a little, um, additional information on some of the statistics behind, uh, what the health office is doing. And kind of just give a, a general review or overview for some of you, uh, with the, uh, health office. Uh, first and foremost, I wanna thank the council for, uh, approving my latest hire. Mr. Anthony Russo, uh, is being processed as we speak. So hopefully, I'm looking to have him start perhaps, um, next week, as soon as next week. So, um, that would be a great addition to our efforts in the health office to, um, continue to promote, um, food safety and, um, healthy, uh, habits here in the city of Harrisburg. Uh, one of the things I wanted to do is just kind of break down a little bit of what the health office, um, of our accounts and and what designates our accounts and how things are done and how these inspections are done and categorized. Um, the first thing is just looking at our particular, um, technology is is tied into the state of Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture. They have something called P A Food Safety, which is a web-based tool that will generally download, um, um, inspections and general information about food establishments throughout the state. I know there's been some issues. I think it is currently being like scrubbed. Um, and they're kind of re-entering some inspections and things, and some of the dates aren't, you know, right. But we're working on, um, getting, some people are still paper-based. So I think we're further along than some municipalities, but there's a lot that's going on with Harrisburg. And I've found out that we weren't even, um, being reported. So a lot of the, um, is a lot of the reporting that was coming from the news stations, they weren't even getting anything from Harrisburg. So we're trying to work on getting all that taken care of. But anyway, what's listed, right, this particular point, there are five hundred accounts in, um, the database at this point. And they're broken down in a number of categories, which I'll review very quickly. Um, there's a category called restaurants. There's a category called retail stores, establishments. There's a category called food vendors. There's a category called bars and clubs. There's a category, um, of schools, daycare facilities, and nonprofits. So, um, each category is broken down by the number of accounts and the percentage of the total accounts. So for example, there is one hundred and seventy-six, um, restaurants, if you will, or entities listed under restaurant, which is about thirty-five point two percent of the five hundred accounts that are listed in the database. The retail food store and establishments, there's one hundred and forty-nine of those. And that represents about twenty-nine point eight percent of the total account base. Uh, food vendors, one hundred, uh, twenty percent of the total account base. Uh, bars and clubs, twenty-two, uh, which is four point four percent of the account base. And, uh, schools, again, number twenty-two, four point four percent. Daycare facilities, eighteen, uh, four point six percent, excuse me, four point three percent. And nonprofits, uh, five, which is one percent of these accounts. So whenever these inspections are being done, and this is something that, um, having, uh, Mr. Russo on board will be able to help me a great deal. Um, is is categorization of the accounts. There is actually a standard, um, from the food code. We're using the, uh, food code of two thousand seventeen. So, um, we haven't formally adopted it, uh, any of the food codes here in Harrisburg. But the, um, process has been over the years that we would just use the adoption process from the Department of Ag. So we kind of ride their coattails, as far as I know, that's been okay. Um, so basically, the categories are such, um, this is kind of a universal risk category. And the risk category basically, um, outlines the level of risk, um, for foodborne illness or an occurrence. And the categories are broken down with the risk category would be a visit, uh, inspection. Um, risk category five represents inspections every six months. That's the most frequent of all the risk categories. Category four would be once a year. Category three, every eighteen months. Category two, every twenty-four months, and category one would be every thirty-six months. So generally, when we do an assessment of these, um, restaurants established, for example, just picking a restaurant, we look at the history. So if it's a category, um, five, there may be some situations with that particular, um, restaurant or entity. They're doing something, they're doing sushi, they're doing some kind of special processing, they're they're curing their own meat. They're they're bringing in, you know, bison. They're doing things that are not, you know, of the usual, you know, um, process. And just things you would normally see on the, uh, menu. So we would categorize them for some, someone to be visited every, to visit them every six months. Also, if they have a history of violations, we tend to put them, and it kind of like repeat offenders or just troublesome for whatever reason. Um, we would categorize them as a category five and put them in every six months. Now, these categories are fluid because people get better and people get worse, you know? So, um, some someone might be a category one, and they just can't get it together. Next, you know, the next year, they go into a four, you know? So, um, it just really varies. Generally, risk category four would be just your general restaurants, guys we go to on a regular basis. You know, serving menu items that aren't complicated, don't have any special processes or special risks. Uh, category three would be every eighteen months. And again, that would be your restaurants that we kind of know over the, excuse me, over the years. They've always had good, you know, um, inspections. They have a knowledgeable staff. They have, um, leadership that pretty much are on top of things, and we can kind of let them kind of go on their own and see where they are. So they would be like a category three. A category two would be against every twenty-four months. So those are your corner stores generally, um, that have good compliance history. Now, corner store, we've had some issues with some of the corner stores that, um, have, um, um, I wanna say like the paninis that have grease traps or or they have the ventilation systems. Um, they're actually delis and and doing some cooking and so forth. They would come in like once, they would be a category of four for every twelve months. So your corner store, and and you see more and more of the corner stores that are really outfitting themselves and trying to be like a restaurant. You know, you go in, they got the panini going, they got a grill going, they got a grease trap going, they got a vent. You know, those, they're very, um, involved. And a lot of times, I'd have to reach out to the commercial code inspector to come with me on the call or just kind of give me some feedback. Because, um, a lot of times, they may or may not, um, be outfitting the right way. So those are are some of the ones that are on the, um, the, on the edge. Um, your farmer's market is gonna be every, you know, twelve months. Um, you know, again, and, um, you know, your risk category for one would be people that are just doing packaged goods. So someone, you know, stored that's just selling chips and sodas, they would come in every thirty-six months. We have a lumber food vendors that come every year. Um, generally, they're gonna be, you know, again, expected every twelve months. Um, they come in for Capona, they come in for, you know, ice and fire and ice, whatever. They're usually once, once a year, and some of them don't come to everything, so it might even be every eighteen months. So bars and clubs, uh, again, generally, I listed, we kind of look at them at category three. But recently, there's been some real challenges. I know, again, listening to our fire chief and listening to Ann about some of the challenges with these clubs. Um, some of them don't serve food, and that's even a problem. I get a lot of calls from the liquor control board, you know, wanting to know, you know, what is their status? Uh, because if they're serving alcohol, they really should have some food, you know? And and I mean, you know, the potato chips and pretzels are technically okay, but these people are drinking an awful lot, you know? And are they really safe? Because they're drinking massive amounts of alcohol, and they are eating, in many cases, nothing. Or maybe even doing illegal drugs or whatever on top of that. So the risk for those exposures and those instances is very high. So, um, sometimes we have to look at those clubs very, um, stringently as well. Schools are very unique. Our educators, our schools have to be, must be, should be, uh, inspected twice a year. So that's through the Department of Ed and, um, only in mitigating circumstances. Now, due to COVID, over the last couple of years, they have lifted that restriction to have them done twice a year. Um, a lot of the private and parochial schools still, still stay on it because a lot of their, you know, outside funding, whatever, is tied into that. So they've been very, very stringent. The, um, public school system has, you know, relaxed that a little bit, but we're coming back to the twice a year, um, for our schools. Uh, daycare facility is pretty much the same thing. We're going to see them, um, you know, twice a year if possible. Um, and some of the residential facilities for older folks would be like once a year if they're adults. Um, if it's cafeteria in, in the hospital, that would probably be once a year also because it's not a children's hospital. And lastly, you know, not, not lastly, but, um, nonprofits, we only had a few of those. And a lot of those, um, are, um, twenty-four to thirty-six months if they don't have like a working kitchen. Um, some of our nonprofits are doing major, um, feeding programs, you know, and, and partnering with a lot of the other um, nonprofits and providing meals and so forth, meals on wheels or whatever that is, um, they're more, they're going to be more frequent, you know, um, you know, twelve to eighteen months were the ones that have the, um, operating kitchens. So there's something called the Retail, um, Standards Program. Retail Food Standards is FDA national program that kind of sets the stage for all of the health offices and, and, um, retail food inspectors throughout the country. And they have some guidelines and a lot of guidelines are geared into some of the, the federal dollars that they send out and they expect us to do certain things and have certain milestones and so forth to continue to receive these dollars. I'm glad to say that, you know, it's been about three hundred and thirty-six dollars that have come in through them. So I'm very, over the next three years, we're going to be getting about three hundred and thirty-six thousand. So there are some expectations in some of the things that we're going to do. And part of my goal in two thousand twenty-three is to continue to, to expand into these other standards that I'll talk about another time. But they go way beyond just going into restaurants and doing, you know, doing inspections. These standards and getting these fundings will take us to the next level to do things as far as the education, um, engagement of, um, stakeholders. Uh, you know, continuing training, you know, excellent training, um, doing, us, doing, um, health assessments, you know? So it goes more into the social determinants of health and how food safety and how, you know, all that ties in together. So the, the trend is to be moving into those directions, um, in these health offices because they're beginning to find out that the partnerships, uh, much like, you know, this going of code and, 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 you know, fire and police. You know, there needs to be partnerships with the health offices, with H R for internal, you know, um, employees, we're people, we're, we're residents, we need to be aware. Um, with, you know, other social agencies and so forth, um, and just business development, you know, because that ties into what the restaurants and what they need. So they're looking for a lot more partnership and a lot more engagement um, from us when they send us these funds. So I'm just going to kind of wrap up on, you know, the, uh, impact of, um, having a full complement and having people on staff. Uh, generally, the, um, the averages that they're looking at comes to be like per F T E, if you will, the range for national standards is like two hundred and eighty to three twenty inspections per year. Um, and again, we're, we're on a, not necessarily a calendar year. This is kind of based on a calendar year. And this is a very aggressive, um, goal, you know? So they're saying if, if a person doesn't do anything else but do inspections every day, all day, this is the range they would think of. Now, obviously they don't factor in things like training and other initiatives and things that go on. But anyway, um, we're running at about two sixty-five, um, at this point, you know, and again, be, me just being by myself and doing this, I spend a lot of time with some other ancillary things. So it's, it's kind of nice to be able to partner with other, um, agencies, you know, trying to do much more of that. Trying to get more involved with, um, the peers that I have in, uh, other municipalities and just trying to do more stakeholder engagement as part of our, our standard. We have met standard seven. There's nine of them, nine altogether. Um, and only a, a very, very few have made all nine. I mean, I think it's like two countries. Um, it, it's just very large that made, like, one, like, all states. So the resources to actually do this in an effective way, um, you need massive resources to actually meet these standards. The, um, satisfaction of the feds. And that's not their goal. Their goal is to try to continue to support, um, the, the pursuit of food safety, you know, healthy living, healthy lifestyle, healthy, uh, communities, educated staff. COVID has like decimated the restaurant industry. Um, the employees, I mean, I've heard person after person come up and talk about how hard it is to find employees. You know, it has, you multiply that, you know, in the restaurant industry because what's happening is people are getting positions. Uh, once they get trained, they go, someone steals them, you know, or they find a better job, or they just don't want to go to the service, say, which is, you know, an expense on the part of the restaurant owner. So it's a real challenge, you know, to continue to promote the food safety culture in, in this, this country and beyond. So, um, you know, we're a lot, a lot like, uh, a lot of the other municipalities, struggling, just trying to keep together and keep going. So with that in mind, you know, I again, uh, appreciate having, um, you guys approving, Mr. Russo to kind of bring some of that institutional knowledge that he has had. Um, one thing I just want to, um, kind of stress, you know, I did ask for, you know, in a, in a budget request for a few dollars to try to um, get another part-time person, you know, right now all of my employees come from the grants. But it would be great to have a person that is from the community that could do, um, ten hours a month, again, very, very minimal, um, you know, field interaction, but mostly someone who is, is from the community, who has some bilingual skills. So I'm definitely looking at expanding in that area. And also, um, somehow you're going to have succession planning. I mean, Mr. Russo is retired from the state. So he's been around for a long time and not looking to do a whole lot. And, and our workforce is not getting any younger. So where is this institutional knowledge going to go? So I think it's going to be behooves us in this, in this, you know, times of, of increased concerns about, you know, bioterrorism and, and adulteration and all this stuff, that young kids in food safety and in the food industry are being snatched up from college. They're setting up programs now. It's a very aggressive movement. It's something that's not going to go away. And, um, you know, we need to make sure we're bringing in people, um, that can continue the work, you know, long after I'm gone or whoever's gone and, and being able to bring in people that are, that are able to interested, to be engaged. And my proposal was to, um, I've had a couple of people in the field. I've did some work at the Y. I've been out, you know, doing some food safety classes, a couple of organizations, and there's residents who have asked about it. You know, well, what, what, you know, when are you, when are you going to post that job again, you know? And so there are people that, you know, one lady's retired, but there was another girl who's in college. You know, so all over the gamut, there are people who are interested in doing some of this work. And if we can find people, even if it's just part-time, I know we're always looking at budget, but, you know, someone who's, who's aware, who's already ingrained in the community, preferably someone who does have bilingual skills, you know, if we can look at that type of person and, and bring someone like that in, even if it's, I've, like I said, I could, I told people, I can only hi, I can only hire, you know, at the time it was only ten hours a month with, only, like, I only got a couple of hours a month. Are you interested, you know? But the, the training and all the, the knowledge that the person would gather over the course of time, if they're truly interested in making this a career or moving forward, because there's a lot of opportunities in food safety and food, you know, protection, um, is bigger, is getting bigger and bigger. So it's just something I would hope that, uh, council and the administration would look at. You know, I'm grateful for what's happened so far, but it's, it's so much more could be done. When I look at the statistics here, um, I'm looking at, um, if, basically looking at the best case scenario as far as being in compliance, I'm only would be, even with, with, um, adding in a new, um, contract employee, I'm only at seventy-seven percent of, um, compliance. And that's on a good, good year. You know, realistically, when we look at, you know, putting in things for the lead program and, and all the other things that I'm doing, we're looking probably, I'm just guessing, probably about probably sixty-five, sixty percent of real compliance to the standards, you know? And that's not a horrible number given the nationwide situation, but it's, we could do, and I always say that with Councilman Rodriguez, we can do better, right? So, um, food for thought, you know, I would love to, you know, have some consideration. I think I had asked for in one of these memos. I think everything I'd asked for was like fifteen thousand dollars literally, um, which would include stuff with the training the person. It was fourteen thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and forty cents. To try to bring in a person, a young person or, or, you know, uh, someone who's interested in the business, who has some time that they can dedicate to this and giving them some training and, and bringing them up to speed. So I appreciate you guys. I appreciate your time today and, uh, anything you can do to support that. In the long term with payoff, you know, mega dividends. We want to be proactive. Or, um, even just from a legal standpoint, we want to continue to move in a positive fashion because we have been so lucky, you know, here in Harrisburg. I have not had a horrible outbreak or anything that I couldn't handle along with my partners at Department of Ag. So we haven't had anything bad happen. And I'm so pleased, you know, other than some places and some, you know, kind of stuff that, that was manageable, we haven't had anything. And, you know, with COVID and all that, that says a lot, but, you know, we want to be prepared. We don't want to be caught off guard. And we need to continue to build. And, um, and another, um, and that's the thing that, uh, again, uh, we talk about goals for the next year. You know, just trying to prepare, um, unfortunately, you know, be more prepared for the first. We need to increase our technology. Um, I need to increase the, uh, amount. I have a lot of materials that are in various, um, languages, you know, as far as food safety, posters and things like that, but we need more, um, forward-thinking stuff, you know, posters and flyers are great, you know? And I have them in like six or seven languages, but we, I would like to see more, you know, technical, technological, advanced communications for our community. That, if anyone has any questions, I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much for that information. It was very informative. Um, I think it gave us a, a in-depth view of the work that you do in your office as well as some of the needs. Um, you did mention a position, a part-time position. Uh, what's the title of the position?
It would be a, um, part-time health inspector, part-time inspector. And again, um, it, it, I guess it would, I'm thinking again, it would probably be like a contract as well because this number, obviously fourteen thousand dollars would not include any type of benefits or car or anything like that. So it would be much like what Mr. Russo is doing, but the calculations I based it on was on a much lower, um, per inspection rate. So it's not, it wouldn't be as, uh, the rate, I think, half of what, uh, Mr. Russo would be getting.
All right. So it's not something we'd find in the position controls because I'm looking for it. I'm like, I don't see it in here. Um, but if it would be a contracted service, it wouldn't be in there. And so, Ann, I'll ask you, is it budgeted for under contracted services inside the budget or?
Well, basically this particular, um, request that I had put in was, um, in addition to grant money because the grant money is paying for the other two employees. So this was, and this is kind of like, I'm looking at more of like a good faith thing because, you know, again, the grant money is covering so much, but they can't cover, it can't cover all of the personnel. You know, there are guidelines with federal grants as to how much can be used for certain things. And so now to bring in this third person and pay for a third person with the grant, uh, may not be, um, you know, within the guidelines that we're talking. And it's not a lot, but I think it's something that the city would have to, because I have to stay in compliance. I would not jeopardize, you know, those monies by, um, not being in line with what's the norm.
Okay. All right. I guess that's something we can discuss later, um, about potentially adding it in. Uh, I think that's a discussion, uh, that we'll kind of have a little later on. I'm going to open up to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments from Ms. Nova Wright, uh, starting with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Green. Um, good to see you both, uh, as always. Um, that's a position I would definitely like to support because I understand the importance and how pertinent it is. Um, do you feel as though with the nightclubs that don't serve food, that's more of a non-compliance issue as far as them, like ramp certifications, of course, it goes in on the importance of alcohol consumption, times the body weight. Um, is it more of non-compliance or them just trying to milk the system and save a little bit of money?
That's a good question. And I, I think it might be a little bit of both because if they start serving food properly, it opens up a whole nother all of.
Absolutely.
Cat of worms, if you will. So, um, I don't think some of these places want that kind of food. So, you know, they'll put the, you know, chips up and then some sodas and, and is that really their goal? I think when I hear from, you know, one of the, you know, old people, usually it's, it's in response to something like underage or excessive, you know, people, you know, these things are happening. Um, but do they want to, you know, do the right thing and, and try to have that balance? Probably not.
Right. And, um, just understanding like the importance of having more code officers, be more efficient down the street. Same thing with the health officers because it will up the quality of what we consume on a daily basis, right? I mean, I, I only speak for myself when I say I've been in a few establishments where the food was subpar and, you know, you kind of wonder. So, um, I understand with the addition of officers, we can definitely increase the quality of what, not only what we consume, but our children in the future. So, um, I look forward to it and thank you for being here to see. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
Thank you. Um, just recall last, during our, the two thousand twenty-two budget discussions, uh, there was a conversation about creating a health department. Uh, have you had any further conversations about that and steps that would be necessary to uh, begin that endeavor?
Actually, yes. I think the administration has been doing a lot as far as coming up with the, um, Equity Roundtable group. So the Equity Roundtable that Mr. Singleton, uh, is, has put together, is running, has a, has a, um, a group, a subgroup, uh, that's health. You know, since that the transportation, education, everything. So the health group has a lot of Tina Nixon and different people from the, um, health industry are on the group and I, and I'm part of the group as well. So, um, I think what's happening with, with that particular group is that they're looking at a very high level, um, um, services. So, you know, how do, they're looking at like prevention for like COVID and outbreaks and everything. So they're, they're looking at some high level, um, emergency, you know, situations. Um, as far as for, for Harrisburg having a health office, the first things that we've talked about quite a bit. And it, it even kind of ties into what Ann needs and what we, we talked about was we have the, um, enforcement for restaurants, if you will. If I go in and I give a citation or I give, you know, warnings or whatever, you know, code has, you know, enforcement powers as, as I do, but I don't have a, um, a board, you know, an appeals board. So when code officers go out and we give our citation or I give my copy of the inspection, there is a statement on the back that says, hey, if you're not, um, you, you don't believe this, you want to, you know, oppose this, there's a board, you know? So right now with, with the code's enforcement, there isn't any, uh, person there that represents the health aspect of the board, you know, of the, of the appeals board. So one of the things I think is going to be a priority moving forward is getting, uh, someone who has the expertise. And I actually met with C R W because there's a whole program that goes with fats, oils and grease, for the, um, grease traps. But we were talking about, you know, getting someone with some expertise onto the boards so that if someone from a restaurant comes in with a gripe, they're going to talk to someone who has restaurant expertise, you know, and who understands what's happening as far as food safety. So from offshooting that, one of the major, um, first steps with having a health office or health bureau is to have your board in place. So by starting that and kind of augmenting the board, um, for code by having some medically trained or music trained person on that board, we can then, my plan is to then expand upon that and get other members of, into a board that can create a health board. It's like the basic one-on-one, uh, thing for the state. If you're going to start a health bureau, you have to have your epidemiologists. So that's kind of like what a back way to get into that. Uh, I think the health board is excellent idea. It needs to happen. We have fifty thousand people here. Um, and I think between the efforts of the Equity Roundtable and some of the things that's happening in our office, um, we, we kind of continue moving forward, but putting down the groundwork, I think, getting that. Awesome start.
All right. Um, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening. I just have a follow-up question. Um, in response to the Board of Health that's needed. I know that that was literally the first step before the department can come. So, um, I guess it should be composed of five members, their mayoral appointments. Are you aware of any potential members for the board that we could look to begin? Are you aware of any potential members for the board that we could look to begin to fill?
Um I might have one, but and and I think the challenge was, um, I don't know if there was a wording in the, and I might have deferred a kneel on that.
There is some updated wording.
Okay.
Whi- which it's, it used to have, they used to have very strict standards for who, the the titles of this, the first professionals in medicine that were on the board. They did take that away and made it easier, but they created an alternative to have a healthcare institution operate as the board. That, so like UPMC, um Hamilton, those were explored a while back, and it didn't get an enthusiastic response because it's not really a business they're in because they've become an enforcement mechanism for things that aren't just, just uh what they do. So we pretty much would have to go with the board to make it practical and work. And there are some uh other professionals that are not MDs now that are allowed on the board that we would have the ability to, I think people in the city actually hold those titles. But I am unaware that we have any nominees in the offing for that, that's a, that's a longer discussion with uh, there are so many boards we have that are not filled.
Oh, no, I understand. I was just curious if that's the starting point for the larger uh department. Thought maybe there was some action. But I see that the ordinance that created this board was in nineteen seventy-nine. I imagine there are quite a few updates since then.
One of the lessons of COVID was every county was supposed to have a board of health, and I think two or three of them did it by when COVID came.
Yeah, there's only, yeah, there's only a few that have, there's only a few counties that actually have a board. Less counties have a health department, and even fewer cities actually have municipal health departments, so.
I think Allentown has a a good functional uh health department and board. So that might be a good model for us to follow. But thank you, that was my only question, just relative to the board.
Thank you, Councilman Madsen.
No questions for me, thank you.
And Councilman Rouse.
Good evening, thank you for being here. I don't have any questions. You gave a a great detailed report, so thank you.
Well, do, thank you both for being here tonight and for giving your presentation. Uh I believe for codes, the follow-up we need, uh it's a couple of job descriptions that we need sent to us. If you can make sure they're sent over to the city council clerk, it would be appreciated. Any other questions or comments from anyone before we move to the public? Saying none. Yes, you can send us a lot of stuff, whatever you would like to send us, we, we always love information. All right, so is there anyone from the public that would like to make comments on tonight's budget hearings? I will start to the right. Saying no one, anyone from the center. Saying none, anyone to the left. All right, uh I will hand it back over to Council President Bowers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um thank you to all of the directors and personnel present uh from the Bureau of Police, Bureau of Fire, Bureau of Code to answer our questions this evening. Vice President Green reviewed all of our outstanding information. I think we actually received an email with some of it. Uh but we look forward to receiving and reviewing the information requested. We are back tomorrow, Wednesday, November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, at five thirty P M. So the time is now nine thirty-four P M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.